All right, good morning, everybody. I want to call this meeting of the Washoe County School District Board of Trustees to order, the special meeting of the board, as you all know. And we're going to start with our roll call, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Madam President. President Taylor?
I'm here.
All right, and I am here. Trustee Calvert?
Here.
Trustee Church?
Here.
Trustee Nicolet?
Here.
Trustee Thigpen?
Here.
We have a quorum, Madam President.
Thank you very much. Okay, we're going to have our pledge of allegiance. And Trustee Thigpen, it's good to have you back in person. Glad you're feeling well, so we're going to ask you to lead us in the pledge, sir. All right, thank you very much. Welcome to all of you who are here. Special welcome to the applicants. Thank you for throwing your names and your hat in the ring. We know that's not an easy thing to do, especially because this is such an unusual process for most of us. I went through the appointment process myself, so I feel your pain. For those of you who are feeling pain, and for those of you who are just loving every bit of it, then there's something wrong with you. And I'll be taking note of that, as we know, just kidding. But we do welcome, we welcome you, and we thank you so much for taking the time out of your day, out of your schedule, to be here, to be with us in this, in this, in this really, really important process for us. Talk a little bit about the process as we go before we, before we get this open. We will, as you know, we're going to go, we're going to start with, we have one applicant, Ms. Lori Wilson, who had a previously planned family trip and so on. And so we're going to have her join us via Zoom. And so you see her name there until she comes in at the, at the appropriate time. We're going to start with her. For the rest of the applicants who are here, just for the record, Mr. Rod Pierce withdrew his name, so we won't just, if you have a list or whatever you're doing, withdrew his name, and so we will not be hearing from here today. Each of the other applicants will have an opportunity, it is not a mandatory opportunity, but will have an opportunity should you choose to address the board for five minutes. A presentation gives you an opportunity, I shouldn't say a presentation, that sounds way, way more formal than it probably is, just to share and talk a little bit about yourself on, and why you want to be a part of this board. During that five-minute period of time, it isn't public comments, by the way, which is why it is in three minutes, but during that five-minute period of time, then members of the Board of Trustees may ask questions, so be, so be aware of that. I wanted to give you, kind of give you a heads up. We certainly ask that you, you, just so, again, don't, don't let that throw you off, but it may be a question about something that you're saying, it may be a question about something in your packet of materials. We all have your packets of materials. We have read through them, I, I'm pretty sure, I know I did, I'm sure they hear every, because we, we people like, hey, did you get, right? So we want to make sure we have, have all the, know that we've, we've read your materials. And thank you for putting those packets together again. Not an easy thing to do, and so we certainly appreciate that work. But again, during that time, we may ask questions of you, so just know that, that's all a part of the five-minute process, that's just part, part of the, the process and the steps that we're taking as we go through this. After that period of time, the board will consider your package information, any notes that people may be taking along the way, and then we will, oh, let me turn my phone off, sorry about that, that it did that early. Then the board will deliberate and talk about, ask questions and, and talk about you. I hate that, I was going to find a nice way to say that, but I don't really know what else, if there is another way to say that, but certainly in a respectful manner, there's no question about that. And then each of us will, JJ's getting us a little sheet, each of us will select, these are the five candidates that, that we would like to move forward into the finalist process. All that gets collected, we turn it over to JJ. We have a little break, she compiles all of that. All of this is public, so you will know which, how every trustee voted. The public will know and so on. And then from there, we'll take a look at kind of where the, where the break is, how we narrow down further from there, and we'll continue a similar type of process until we get down to, there's always a natural break in there somewhere. Usually it's three to five, but it might be six, it might be two, I mean, you never know, right? I don't think it'd be two, but those, those names that will go forward, and then we will meet you back here next Tuesday, and that will actually be the formal interview process, and then we'll talk a little bit more about that when we get to that, to that period of time. And so just wanted to review for each of you what that might look like, you know, we might be here for quite a period of time, but again, don't feel as though you, you don't have to speak, you don't have to use your five minutes, it's completely up to you, but we did want to give you this opportunity to add any additional information in addition to what it is that you've already submitted to us throughout this process. Okay? That being said, I do want to make sure that I, that I note, I'm taking my notes here. I do want to make sure that I note that there are, because it's really important to do this, we know this is Reno, it's a relatively small community, and I'm old, I've been around for a long time, and so there are several, and this is not unusual, there are several of the applicants who I know, some closer than others, but I want to make sure, I think it's important on the record to know that, hey, I have an acquaintance with some, I'm going to read names, to hopefully I cover those, not just if I just kind of know you in passing, I probably won't mention that name, but Denise Coverly, she was Coverly when I knew her, Paxton, Sean McCaffrey, as I said, Rod Pierce withdrew his name, Verita Black Prothrow, Erica Reed, let's see, making sure it goes with everything in here, Alicia Towel, those are, others I met, again, I may have met, but those are folks that just, that for some reason or other, maybe our paths have crossed a little bit more, some closer than others, I think, just think it's really important. I want to make sure I put that on the record. Am I going to recuse myself? There's no benefit I get or anything like that, we aren't cousins, nobody's my relative or anything like that, but it's important to make sure I put that on the record, so. And I'll give that opportunity for any other trustees who may want to do the same. Dr. Nicolet?
Yes, thank you. Dr. John Gaultney has been in my sphere of influence for quite a while, was president at TMCC when I was an employee there, and, and so we definitely have some, some history. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Nicolet, open the, yes, trustee Calvert?
I have met with Sean McCaffrey, I know Alicia Towel, and I have met with Verita Black.
Good, thank you very much, trustee Calvert. Any others? I think we're good. I want to give that opportunity to you as well, as well trustee Church, if, I don't, I don't know, I'm not saying, I think you do have some disclosure, but if you do, I want to certainly give you an opportunity to do that. Yes, sir, go ahead.
Yeah, I do know the Suttons, Bruce Parks, Roger Edwards, Ken Giato, I think that's it, but I know a number of people casually.
Okay, thank you very much, casual relationships, most of this, is that the case? But still, we want to make sure we're on the record for any of those that may happen, okay? All right, all right, I think we could cover that, counsel, want to make sure we're, we're good to go? All right, thank you very much. We will begin, and we will start with Ms. Lori Wilson, because she is on Zoom. Again, all the other names, JJ's pulling them randomly, and then please come forward should you choose, if you don't want to come forward, again, that's okay, I don't want you to feel like you have to, but JJ will make reference, we call your name as we go along. So we'll start with Ms. Wilson, JJ.
Ms. Wilson, go ahead whenever you're ready.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, please, go right ahead, and thank you for taking time, thank you for taking time on your, on your Hawaiian vacation to be with us, thank you so much.
Thank you. Good morning, members of the board. My name is Lori Wilson. First, I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak to you through Zoom. I want to say that I am slightly disappointed not to be at the admin building talking in front of you all. You see, I was about six years old when I started roaming those hallways. My mom was secretary to many of the administrators back in the day, and those administrators were always so kind to me and made me feel so welcome. I love seeing Dr. Moss in the hallway, or talking to Mr. Huntsberger, or Mr. Green while waiting for my mom. When I was 14 years old, I asked, was asked to work out back at the print shop for a few years, or for, I'm sorry, for a few weeks to help with the end-of-year rush. Fast forward 10 years, and I was still working for the print shop. My supervisor allowed me to work my print shop shift between classes at UNR until I graduated in 1999 with my Bachelor of Science in Elementary Education. I would brag to my friends about having the best free parking spot at UNR, right in front of the print shop, a short walk over the railroad tracks to class. After I graduated from UNR, I went on to teach sixth grade for three years at Mamie Toles. In 2003, I moved down the street to Elmcrest Elementary School, where I spent the remaining 17 years of my career as a teacher. Last year, when I told my principal that I was retiring at the end of the school year, she stated that I was going out at the top of my game. I'm not sure if many teachers can say that, however, it is something that I pride myself in doing. But when COVID hit and I walked out of the classroom for spring break, I had not anticipated that that would be the last time that I would teach. Unable to get the much-needed closure to this part of my life was no easy task. I knew that I needed to be okay with this new transition. After all, teaching had been my life. And for this reason, I went back and forth on what I should do. I did lots of praying, I talked to my husband and my family, and finally decided to retire at the end of the 2020 school year as planned. Luckily, my amazing Elmcrest family welcomed me back to substitute teach and to mentor a long-term substitute. The most amazing thing was to be able to substitute teach in my old classroom for an entire week. When I introduced myself to the fifth graders, I cried as I thanked them for the opportunity to be back in my room and to teach their cute little faces. I got that much-needed closure. I was reflecting on what I would share with you all today, I felt like that was important to share, those things about me, but let me explain why I'm here. I worked at a school that started at 9:00 a.m., contract hours dictated I'd be there 8:30 to 3:30. I would arrive every day by 7:30 and oftentimes stay well past 5:00. It wasn't just the preparation for the day that brought me in early, but it was also that at any given morning, I would have multiple teachers come to my room to talk to me. Some teachers needed advice on a lesson, or ideas on how to handle a difficult student, or they just wanted to chat about our upcoming breaks. Oftentimes, we would sit and need to vent about a new policy change, testing, or something else that we needed to get out of our system before we had to turn on our smiles for our kiddos. I remember using the words "you are preaching to the choir" as we would say some of the same things over and over, complaining about things that we couldn't change or didn't have the power to change. As a leader at the school, most teachers came to me for advice, because they knew I was not afraid to ask the hard questions, question those answers sometimes, but always do it in a fair and compassionate way. Why do I want to do this job? I want to be part of the solution. I'm tired of venting about things I can't change. I want to continue to be the voice for all the teachers and the people in District C. I want to be the voice for the parents, as I'm a proud parent of two and can relate to many of their concerns. I want to be the voice for the, both the classified and the certified employees, I know the challenges that they face. And most importantly, I want to be the voice for students. I've taught over 1,000 students in my years of teaching. I know kids, I know how to teach kids, and I know how students learn best. As I mentioned at the beginning, the admin building in the Washoe County School District is a special place to me. Growing up, running the halls, working out back at the print shop for 10 years, attending Sted Elementary School, Sierra Vista Elementary School, and HUG High School, being hired by Shirley Woods under the Equity and Diversity Program, teaching at Mamie Toles and Elmcrest Elementary School, accepting my Excellence in Education Award, and speaking in front of the board, and retiring during a pandemic have all led me here today. The Washoe County School District is what I know. It's not just a place I went to school or who I taught for, it's truly a part of who I am. So please consider me for this position. I promise you will not find someone else with the same passion for education and for the kids of this community. You will not find someone with the same knowledge base of the district that I have had over the years. And most importantly, I'm done preaching to the choir, I'm ready to preach to the congregation. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson, I was, I was just about to interrupt you, so I'm glad I didn't have to, I know that there's a flow, I want to try to respect as much as I can. Just, you, you mentioned that you retired, thank you for your service, by the way, being in the classroom, really important for those, for those, those kids and those, those schools. Did you care to share, why the shift? What was it in you that said it's time for me to, to shift out of the classroom?
Um, I just knew that I wanted to do something different. I thought about doing admin, and that had crossed my mind years ago, and just looking at my life, and I'd done teaching, and I just knew that I wanted to do something, take my skills and do it in a different way.
Okay, I appreciate that, thank you so much. Time's up, can you real quick, you're, you're good? Okay, thank you very much, Ms. Wilson, again, thank you for taking the time during your vacation, and I know you'll stay, continue the, on YouTube and watch, and then follow along as we get towards the end of the process.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. JJ, who's next? She's pulling them out of the cup. For all to see, transparency at its finest, 2021 transparency, right there.
Jamie Shepler?
Jamie Shepler here? I see someone else shaking their head, okay? Okay, it's okay, Mary, it doesn't disqualify you for not being here if you don't make that, so just know that.
Erica Reed?
Welcome, Ms. Reed. No, you're, you're on.
Okay. Good morning, members of the Washoe County School Board District Board of Trustees. My name is Erica Reed. I understand that you're in the process of searching for an individual to fill the soon-to-be open seat of Mr. Andrew Cottle in District C. I believe my qualifications and personal character make me an ideal candidate for this position. My work history and passion are centered on working with children and working with the community. Through my work and volunteer experience, I have developed strong leadership, communication, listening, and coordinating skills. I have worked as an after-school site coordinator, parent involvement facilitator, student graduate advocate. I have served and been a coach, just to name a few positions that I have held. Throughout my various work experience, I have worked to support schools, families, and the community to promote education. In these positions, I have seen firsthand that schools, families, and the commu, or sorry, I have worked to support schools, families, and the community to promote education. In these positions, I have seen firsthand that every family cares about their student's success. It may look different depending on the resources, opportunities, and other variables that families may have access to. It is my belief that every family wants their child to be successful. To me, being on the school board means being a part of a team that builds a bridge between the community and the schools. This also looks like helping students meet their full potential. I see the Washoe County School Board as the voice of the parents, community members, school staff, and the students. All these groups tell us what they want for our schools, and then it is our job as a board to go and share these messages with the superintendent and other school leaders and advocate for the school district. We advocate for the school district by speaking up for them with the elected officials and within the community. We provide direction for the school by empowering the superintendent, staff, and the students. We do not tell the schools what to do. I believe it is the board's job to help put resources in places so that the staff can complete their schoolwork, and every student by face and name can reach their full potential. That might look like having money, staff, materials, or whatever else the schools may need in the right places at the right time to ensure success. The board and superintendent work together to prepare students for the future, which I believe this board has done a very good job of by maintaining a balanced budget over the last few years. If picked for the board, I would see this as another opportunity to be an advocate for all students in our community. I myself have grown up in northern Nevada, and I am a proud, and I am a product of the Washoe County School District. I attended the University in Nevada Reno, where I ran track and graduated with a degree in English. I currently have two children going to school in the district. This past year, my two children did distance learning, which helped me see the immediate connection to the challenge that teachers face in, in real time, and not just teachers, but the Transportation Department and Nutrition Services, just to name a few of the departments. However, there are many new amazing things happening in the district as well, like the buildings, building of the new schools and the, and school repairs made possible by WC1. This particular, this is particularly true for the school board, for the, for the school board District C, which is benefiting from some of the biggest projects, like the O'Brien Rebuild, the new elementary school in Cold Springs, the new middle schools in Sun Valley and, and Spanish Springs, the new HUG High School campus, and the new Career and Technical School at the old HUG campus. I am so excited to see this come to life and the opportunities it will create for all students, especially those in the North Valleys, for whom AACT is really quite far away. I believe the role of the trustee is to work with the community, listen to all voices, and set broad policy for the district. A trustee must be open-minded, as few issues that come to, that come before the board are cut and dry or fit in, into easy boxes. A trustee will do their homework, visit schools, communicate with the community, and make their best decision. They, they can, sorry, they can with the fact, or, and make their best decisions they can with the facts that come before them. I believe my background, skills, interests, and personal temperament fit this role well. As a board member, I would like to help build the bridge between the schools and the community. If selected, I will dedicate myself to serve on the board with integrity and commitment to the policies. Sorry. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Reed, whether any, any questions, we're, we're good. Thank you, Ms. Reed.
Okay, thank you.
Sarah Horner?
Ms. Horner?
Candy Lorenzo?
Ms. Lorenzo, welcome. Good morning, thank you for being here, ma'am.
Good morning. My name is Candy Lorenzo. Thank you for allowing me to formally introduce myself as you review my candidacy for the trustee position. I have been a Washoe County resident for 20 years. I have three children. My oldest daughter graduated from North Valley High School this past June. I have a daughter at O'Brien Middle School and a son at Sted Elementary School. I would like to take the time to thank the board for the recent and ongoing improvements to the schools in the area. Thanks to your dedication, the North Valleys has seen vast updates to our schools, and I look forward to potentially expanding upon the work that you've already done. My children have also been impacted by the dedication of the teachers and staff at those schools. Thanks to Mr. McQuivvy and Ms. Brown at North Valleys High School, they kept my daughter motivated to succeed even during a pandemic in distance learning. I would also be as dedicated to the children we serve. I see this as an opportunity to expand upon the service which I already do in my community. As the Regional Commissioner for the American Youth Soccer Organization of Reno, based in, based in the North Valleys, I have worked with hundreds of families over the years to provide a safe environment for children of all abilities in which they can develop and grow. One of the main tenets of AYSO is everyone plays. I'm a supporter of inclusion and ensuring that all children are included and feel accepted. My other volunteer work in the community has allowed me the opportunity to mentor youth, specifically the Nevada Promise Scholarship Program through TMCC. I believe that education is the equalizer. Had it not been for education, I wouldn't be standing here before you today. I have a master's degree in management and leadership and plan on using the skills I have attained in service to my community. I currently work as an analyst with the City of Reno in the Civil Service Commission. My current role mirrors many of the same skills needed to be a trustee. I am a responsible steward of the tax dollar. I owe it to constituents to be mindful of both time and money expenditures. I also work to support a commission, which is subject to open meeting law, and governed by rules, laws, and regulations. I also work with industrial organizational psychologists to create appropriate testing devices for our candidates. This would prepare me to answer questions that parents, students, or staff may have regarding testing, especially as I'm familiar with candidate acceptance and questions on test validity. Being bilingual is another strength. I can answer these questions in English or Spanish, and it is, as the saying goes, things get lost in translation. I have a Level 2 certification obtained through TMCC, which means I can translate both written and spoken Spanish. It is my hope that constituents would feel comfortable enough to reach out to me directly, as I represent a historically underrepresented population, they wouldn't need a translator to go through and speak to me. As a recruitment and selection specialist, my background is in human resources, as is my bachelor's degree. I would bring the knowledge of evaluation practices and procedures. In closing, I'm a dedicated civil servant with a history of servant leadership within the community. I would bring the same tenacity and dedication to the role of trustee as I do in my current career and volunteer duties. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Lorenzo, I, I will jump in with, with the question. What was it that made you decide I want, I want to be on that board?
So I was, I volunteer a lot at O'Brien Middle School, which is where my daughter goes, and we had some unfortunate things happen in the past, I won't say, talk about them here, but I'm sure you're aware, and I really made it a duty of mine to find out what was the underlying cause, and I feel I should be more involved, especially now that my daughter has graduated high school and my kids are a little bit older, I have more time to do more of these types of things, even though I do coach and do other things, I can do things during the day, my job does allow me that leniency.
Thank you, Ms. Lorenzo. Any other questions? Okay, it looks like we're good. Thank you so much, thank you for being here, we appreciate it.
Courtney Goodvall?
Welcome, Ms. Goodvall, thank you so much for being here.
Thank you for having me, good morning, everybody. I do not plan on taking all five minutes, as you have my packet before you, but I want you to know, I've been in the area of northern Nevada for the last 15 years and have three children in the Washoe County School District. I have been a part of navigating my children's academic career, as we know, this is lifelong and life-changing. Everything I've done in the past, present, and hopefully continued future have been working with children and families. I've served on, in multitude of capacities. I've been a coach for the last 20 years. I've served as a military wife the last 15 years, working with children and families during deployments. I've taught and substitute-teached in the Washoe County School District. I've also obtained my teaching license at the University in Nevada Reno, where I've also been a adjunct faculty. My current job is a day treatment program director, where I serve children and families who've been victims of crime ages three to six years old. I'm happy to say we serve, that is a grant-funded program, and we serve children free of charge, there is no other program within 900 mile radius in north, of northern Nevada. We all know, those that typically work with children and families, we are not in it to yield a monetary gain. We're in it because we see that there is a need, and we know we can meet that need. I know representing District C, I would meet the need of my community, I would help bring understanding back to the community from the Board of Trustees, and help, help them feel like they have a win-win situation, and most of all, understand the reasons of the decisions that the Board of Trustees are making. I understand voting and on policies and critical decision impacts more than just our district, it impacts the children and families of the children enrolled, and therefore impacting our surrounding community. I want nothing more than to help change those children's lives for the better and the families, families' lives and our community's well-being. I recognize that our school district has seen a tremendous amount of growth over the last decade. I'm ready to become a part of that growth and a part of a team that impacts the community on a micro level.
Thank you, Ms. Goodvall. Any other questions? We have a few minutes left of hers, no? Okay, thank you so much, ma'am, thank you for being here.
Denise Coverly Paxton?
Ms. Paxton, good morning, welcome, thank you for being here, congratulations on your retirement.
Yes, thank you, I'm super excited about that. So, thank you, everyone, I'm Denise Coverly Paxton, I am a newly-retired teacher of the Washoe County School District of 30 years. I have, I am not only a retired teacher, but I'm also a parent of three graduates of the Washoe County School District. I grew up as a student of the Washoe County School District of educators. My father retired as a teacher, taught 35 year, or 25 years at Sparks High School, and then retired from Billina. My mom was a, is a retired secretary, she has also worked up here at the admin building. And so I grew up in the Washoe County School District, grew up in the halls of the schools. I am not only a resident of District C, but I've also taught at schools within District C. So I began, I student-taught at Sted Elementary School, and then opened Lois Allen Elementary School, and even as a brand-new teacher, I was given teacher leadership responsibilities, implementing programs like Ocean Week. I was instrumental in the, the SIP program. As a general education teacher, I spoke at a special education conference where I shared our knowledge on how to integrate students within to the regular classroom.
I'm sorry, let me interrupt you, just mostly for the, for the public and for the SIP, talk a little bit about that.
So SIP students are students who qualify for special education through, at, when I was working more closely with those students, it was called behavior disorders emotionally, then it was called emotionally, emotional disorders, and now it's SIP. So those are students who need more direction, more structure, to help them gain the skills to be successful eventually going back into the regular classroom. I have also taught at Virginia Palmer, where I taught with Ellen, and to and took quite a few leadership roles there, and then finished my career at Shaw Middle School. I have always had a teacher leadership role within our district. Most recently, I was one of the three teachers chosen to be on the district's reopening task force and was very honored to be a part of that. And very, I felt very comfortable in the decisions that the district and the board made in helping our students and families navigate through this last year and a half of the pandemic. For many people, they have, look at this last year as a year of loss for our students, but for me, I saw a huge amount of growth for our students within Shaw Middle School. And they learned how to advocate for themselves. They learned how to problem solve. They learned how to cooperate and reach out and help each other. And the amount of empathy that they gained would never have come from any other situation. I'm very confident that my students are ready to, as an eighth-grade teacher, are ready to be successful at the high school level. I want to, I've always advocated with my children as well as my students the importance of civic engagement, and I see this as an opportunity for me to continue to give back and serve the students and families of the Washoe County School District. When my son was little, I took him to educational rallies down in Carson City. We had lunch with the governor, took him to listen to the presidential candidates speak. My daughter, when she was at Shaw Middle School before I moved there, she was given the Class Act Award that Channel Four gives out for someone to know because of her willingness to always reach out and help others and just try and make her, her place better for everyone. I have come to this board on numerous occasions when I felt a need to raise concerns and to ask for positive change. I have always advocated for the students of the Washoe County School District. My principal, when this appointment came up, he actually said, "I was going to call you last night because I have a job for you when you retire," which meant a lot to me, that he really values my passion and my advocacy for the students and families of the school district.
Thank you, Ms. Coverley Paxton. See any other questions? Okay. Thank you for being here.
Danielle Pereira.
Did we say that right, Pereira?
Yes.
Okay. Fantastic. Welcome. Thank you for being here.
Thank you for having me. Good morning, Superintendent McNo, Madam and Sir Trustees. My name is Dani Perro. I live in Cold Springs, and I am eager to serve on the Washoe County School District's Board of Trustees, representing District C. The primary strengths I'll bring to the board are communication, collaboration, vision, and accountability. I am a mother and a foster mother. I am the very proud wife of a sheriff sergeant. I've worked in just about every facet of the landscape construction industry for the last 15 years. And I also had, sorry, intermittent stints in our local casino industry. For eight years, I served on the Silver State Calhirkin Board of Directors in the North Valleys as secretary, treasurer, and player agent, ensuring efficiency, transparency, and adherence to the national organization standards. For the last three years, I have served on the Board for the Nevada Landscape Association, which utilizes education, communication, and community involvement to provide leadership, increase professionalism, and raise standards in the landscaping industry in Nevada. I've organized three widely successful blood drives in honor of a dear friend who passed away in 2020. Those involve planning, delegating, resource acquisition, and more. Throughout my career, I've served as clerical, management, bookkeeper, sales, and more. I am no stranger to effective communication, dispute mediation, managing public perception, and overseeing budgets. I mentioned before I'm a mother. My oldest in 2020, oh, sorry. My oldest is a 2020 North Valley Honors graduate. He now plays baseball in college in California. I've got 20 years of experience within the Washoe County School District, and I've got at least that many more to go. My children have attended five of our local public schools. Navigating each of my children's unique paths through school is a full-time job in and of itself. I've been the mother of a student athlete, a student body president, honors students, students with IUPs, and I've been a mother who gets phone calls from the vice principal. I've helped in the classroom and I've challenged administrations. I've seen and experienced what Washoe County does well, and I've seen and experienced its shortcomings. And that is exactly why I'm here, gunning for a seat on the board. Throughout my professional career, I've often been directly involved in hiring new employees. I've hired high school dropouts with seemingly untapped potential and graduates who continually, graduates who could barely fill out a form correctly. While I've had the fortune, fortune to meet many amazing products of our schools as well, I've also spoken with many who never knew their post-high school options or how to access resources. I want better than that for our students. I want Washoe County School District to embrace its mission to produce academically competent and socially and emotionally sound graduates, and that's why I'm here. I'm accountability-driven. I look at successes and failures alike, and I ask myself the hows and whys, and where can we go from here? As a school board trustee, I'll review data, take in feedback, and work with all stakeholders to answer those how and why questions. And then importantly, work on how we can get better. It takes visionary teamwork along with transparency for a board such as this to serve the interests of its students and their families, as well as its educators. I want to bring my experience and strengths to the table to help make Washoe County School District a more attractive place for quality educators. That's why I'm here. I'm a lifelong Northern Nevada resident. I'm a Cold Springs homeowner. I'm a mother and a foster mother whose door is always open. I'm a neighbor, an employer, a consumer, an advocate, and a firm believer in the importance of primary education. For all these reasons and more, every facet of Washoe County School District is vitally important to me. As a board trustee for District C, I will work collaboratively, listen intently, and make decisions not rooted in bias or opinion, but in the interest of our students, our educators, and our community. I'll examine and reevaluate policy. I'll utilize resources and remain driven by all the right motivators to ensure Washoe County School District is aiming for the right markers, reading the markers and producing academically and socially and emotionally competent graduates. I'm Dani Perro. Thank you for your time this morning.
You did good.
Sorry, I was trying to go quick.
Nope, you did, you did good. You, you did good. Any questions for Ms. Perro? Okay, Xena, thank you so much. Exhale, you did good. You got through it. Exhale. Thank you so much. You did good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Cindy Solis.
Ms. Solis?
Morgan Lydic.
Mr. Lydic, good morning. Listen, thank you for being here. Just make sure we get your microphone on, sir, before we get you started. She'll take care of it.
Test one, test two. It seems to be on.
I think, I think you're right, but let's, do, do we need to get this one off, Jason?
All right.
Uh, no, hang on. No, no, no. Stay there. You're good. You're good. You can stay there. No, no, we, we just wanted to get that one off. You're good. I mean, you can go over there if you want to, but you're fine.
Okay.
Okay, welcome, sir. Begin whenever you're ready. Thank you for being here again.
President Taylor, ladies and gentlemen of the board, thank you for this opportunity to put a face to the paper you have before you. I'd like to begin by saying that, referring to President Taylor's remarks, at the beginning of this meeting, there is something wrong with me. I enjoy this kind of civic engagement, which is, in my opinion, the right and duty of every citizen of our republic. I'm not a local. I chose Reno deliberately. I have been a U.S. Foreign Service Officer, a professor of U.S. History and Western Civilization. I have lived and worked in countries around the world and in a number of states. In doing so, I've come in contact with a great many school systems, not only in the United States, but also abroad. It was part of my work in countries as varied as Turkey to Saudi Arabia and Australia to do so. My wife taught abroad and in the United States at the elementary level, so I had a close look in that way, too. I've seen a good many systems that work and even more that really don't. So I've had experience that way. I've interacted with schools and administrations, really all over the world. Last Tuesday, Dr. Allsberry seemed to suggest in his presentation that the Washoe School District Board of Trustees could be a little more efficient in its operation. I tend to agree. Wow. Just wow. I know, it's, it's a difficult task the school board has here balancing the interests of students, parents, taxpayers, the public. Isn't easy. I'd like to offer my expertise to help do that. I think that all students should learn to the best of their abilities and that they should have every tool to be able to do that. I think that they should leave a school system with the ability to read technical materials, bank statements, operational manuals, literature, including the classics, which are the foundation of our civilization. I think they should be able to do decent mathematical calculations. I think they should be prepared for life. And I'm prepared to help to the best of my ability allow them to do this.
Mr. Lydic, if I may, just prepare for life.
Of course.
Really, thank you, sir. Prepare for life. What does that look like to you?
What's that look like to me? If they seek higher education, they should be prepared to seamlessly enter higher education. They should be prepared to read at a college level. They should be prepared to write coherent sentences, paragraphs, essays. They should be prepared to interact with their fellow students as fellow students. If they choose not to go to higher education, and in a lot of cases, this is entirely justified, they should be prepared to enter the world of work with perfect confident, confidence in their ability to, sorry about going over.
That's okay. I appreciate it, Mr. I'm, I'm gonna have to cut you off, though, sir, if, if you would.
No, they, they should be prepared.
I'm sorry, I'm, I'm gonna have to cut you off. I think we get what you're saying, though. If they don't want to go to college, they should be prepared to go in another direction. And I think we've picked that up, sir. Thank you for your time and thank you for being here. We appreciate it.
Take care.
John Galtney.
Good morning.
Dr. Galtney, welcome, sir. Thank you for being here.
Thank you for the opportunity to visit with you this morning. My name is John Galtney. I reside at 220 Stags League Circle in Spanish Springs. I'm here to provide an opportunity to examine some of the things that are important to me about public education. Number one, I'd like to indicate to you that I hope I'm well-prepared to answer your question on why I want to do this. I think my wife has now asked me at least a dozen times why I want to do this, and so I've had a number of answers to that. The first thing that I would like to point out on my resume is that I have worked for a number of boards and I have served on a number of boards, probably as many as anyone in this room or maybe more so. My experience in working with boards is probably capped at the current time by my time that I spent eight years on the State Board of Education here in Nevada. When I accepted the nomination to do that, ran for the office, I had been in the office only a short period of time when Senator Ragio called me and said, "The State Board of Education needs reorganization. Would you take the lead in trying to do that?" And I did, with Senator Zagaskia at the time. So I have some experience not only in serving a member of boards, but I have some experience in helping boards accomplish what they like to accomplish. The second point that I'd like to make with you today is probably the single strongest point that led me to talk about trying to become a part of the Public Education Board. Most of the people who know me don't know that I started my life as a welder. My father owned a welding and machine shop, and by the time I was 15, I could run a pretty good bead. My father was a little concerned when I went bad and decided to go off to college and that I might not be interested in taking over the family business since I was the only, only child at the time. I have found a great affection for the crafts over the years, and I would like to see that strengthen. You, as a board, have done a substantial job, in my opinion, developing the graduation rate and doing what I think needs to be done in that category. I'm not sure that we, as a community, are strong in favor of those students who may not be four-year college-bound. I think that's a very, very important step, not what that we haven't tried. And you're to be congratulated for the fact that you're doing the Hug High School, which I think is an excellent idea. And I think it is commendable that this board has moved that direction. However, providing the technical training is only half the issue. As a friend of mine said to me the other day, "We need to stop thinking that students have failed if they don't go off to a four-year college degree." When I talked to the Chamber of Commerce recently, they indicated to me that eight out of every 10 people who will be hired and on the Beltway out here do not need a four-year college degree. They need skills. They need the attitudes, and we can help provide that. I'd like to be a part of strengthening that process that I think you people have already done a good job starting. The last point I'd like to make, and then I'm open for questions, is that you are a bipartisan board. I think that's terribly important in this day and age, that you remember, and I want to help be a part of that, that this is not where political issues come to rest. You are much, much more important than that. Fashions and political hot points and so on go away. You're dealing with the future of children in 20 years from now, not just for trends and issues of that type. You're dealing with their future. So I would like to be a part of that. I think I can be a part of that if you allow me to do so. Last, I'd like to say, however you make the choice, I will support you in the future. I've already heard a number of talented people who I think would make great board members for you. So if at any time I can be of service in any other way, I would do that as well. Certainly, I'd like to be a member of the board. Are there any questions?
Well, we have three seconds, so I'm, I'm gonna take that as a no. But certainly, you'll tell my colleagues if someone, there's no lights on. Thank you, Dr. Galtney. We appreciate you being here.
Kenji Otto.
Mr. Otto, I thought I saw him there. Yes. Welcome, Mr. Otto. Thank you for being here, sir.
Well, thank you for having me, and it's an honor to be amongst the many people that, talented individuals. Basically, I wanted to let you know that I'm, I was, I'm a single dad, or was a single dad. My kids are in their 30s now. And I'm more than comfortable up here. So I go to a lot of the committee. I go to a lot of the committee, to the meetings, government meetings and what have you. I'm involved in a lot of projects throughout the county with my Commissioner Gene Herron. And I am here because I believe that I can lend some of my experiences and work as a team member of this board. I'm not, I didn't grow up here. I'm a Army brat. So I've done a lot of traveling. I was down in Panama when they had the riots back in the 60s. I still remember that. And I'm well-traveled because of my military service, and which has given me the opportunity to work with a lot of people and talk to them. People tend to like to talk to me, for whatever reason. I'm not quite sure about that. But I also am in very... I've been very involved in budgets, multimillion-dollar budgets with the military, with a variety of government agencies. One of the things that I did was, if you ever look at CD, the dual-screen monitors, that was basically... I think I can take credit for that. And because one day, an engineer at Caltrans asked me if he could, if I could build something for him out of a, for a program that they could do CAD work, and they were doing, and then ended up saving the state a ton of money because they were able to get rid of a contract with IBM. And also, it also allowed the state to put a, their department that, to retrofit all of the bridges in California into our district because we had the capabilities to do that.
Mr. Otto, since you paused for a minute, I'm gonna jump in and ask a question that kind of related earlier. You mentioned about your commitment to teamwork, which I think is really important, so thank you for that. Also, you know, it's well-known, you've been kind of hard on this board. So how do you think the two of those could jive together? How do you think that would, or could, impact your ability to be a valuable, added value to the team?
Well, I'm, I have, as I said, I'm military. And in my career as in military and also through state service with the state of California, I, yes, I've been hard on the board. I've been hard on, I'm hard on anybody that I see that's making mistakes. And I will call them out. And I'm very upfront about everything that I do. I'm, I don't, I don't hold back. And as far as, but I do, I've been, I've worked with teams that, all the way up to the Pentagon, different commands, and establish procedures, policies and procedures for the Air Force and for the state. And it's, you know, we're trying to get, if you're trying to get something done, then you have to say what's on your mind and be honest. And I don't have a problem with doing any of that. But we have to keep things friendly and businesslike, and I've always been able to do that. I get, I dig deep into things. I brought a list of all of the, like, the NRSs and the administrative codes for the state. I'm very good at reading all of those. And I enjoy looking into those things. And that's, you know, we need to be able to function in a manner that is conducive to the county and the schools and the children. As I said, I'm a single dad, and I just learned my grandson is autistic, so one more thing I get to learn about and how to help him. But I'm very involved in a lot of things, and I have, as I indicated, a wide range of background.
I appreciate that, Mr. Otto, thank you so much.
Sure.
I don't see any other questions, okay. Thank you, sir.
Carolyn Sullivan.
Ms. Sullivan, oh, right here, right in front?
Yeah, hi.
Okay, welcome, Ms. Sullivan, thank you for being here.
Thank you, Mrs. Taylor. Good morning, and thank you for having me here today. My name is Carolyn Sullivan. The question is, why do I want to be a trustee? And what do I have to offer the people of this community and the students in the district if I were to serve? I'm a 45-year member of the Truckee Meadows community. I love the Reno Sparks area and the people who live here. But I'm especially passionate about the children. These young students are beautiful, people who are energetic, have dreams for their future, and a desire to soak up all of the education we can offer. They're hungry to learn, and their parents, the church, and the Washoe County School District Board of Trustees, along with the superintendent, teachers, and supporting staff are responsible for providing that food. To quote a famous song by Whitney Houston, "I believe the children are our future. Teach them well and let them lead the way. Show them all the beauty they possess inside. Give them a sense of pride to make it easier." I've always loved education. Sometimes I wondered if I could be a lifetime student because I loved to learn. Many of my teachers from high school had a direct effect on where I went in life. They challenged me to learn, to think critically, to be the best that I could be. When my original career dream seemed to be a thing of the past, I changed the direction, knowing that all education is useful, even if it doesn't help you earn a living, but instead teaches you how to live. Education should be fun. Going to school should be challenging. The Washoe County School District's only goal should be to give our students a wonderful education that prepares them for a life beyond high school, whether that be higher education or a career that does not require further classwork. We should be graduating 100% of our students and giving them access to a place in the world that is carved out specifically for them. The Board of Trustees has a direct impact on students as they select and work with the superintendent, finance buildings and programs, implement curriculum and policies that affect the teachers and the students. As a member of the Board of Trustees, I would empower the teachers to teach from a curriculum that provides for the best possible outcome for our youth. I would like to help craft a curriculum that challenges our students, one that incorporates the basics: math, reading and language arts, foreign language, history, and science. These are the cornerstone of a well-rounded education, one that provides the ability to speak well in public, craft a wonderfully-written paper or CV, carry on a lively debate, read and discuss a classic novel, and gain meaningful education in a post-educational, excuse me, meaningful employment in a post-educational world. Not only have I participated in and led, as you can see on my paperwork, organizations like Safe and Sober Grad Night and Northern Nevada Concerns of Police Survivors, but have volunteered in my church and youth group, youth sports, always with an emphasis on the children. I'm passionate about providing our youth with access to a wonderful, well-rounded education, extracurricular activities that help them to grow, and an environment that demands critical thinking skills, all of which will help them succeed as they grow into adults. As a member of the board, I would scrutinize the funding of all programs and expenditures, making sure that tax dollars are spent in a way that honors the hard-working men and women of our community who pay those taxes. I would work together with each trustee, as well as the superintendent, looking for solutions to existing and new challenges within our district. And I would be laser-focused on looking for ways to improve the education that's provided to our young people, the young people of our community through the Washoe County School District. These young people are our future. They're the ones who will help us with our finances and our health care. They will repair our cars and air conditioners. They'll work in our local retail industry, be our businessmen and women. They will provide us with enjoyment as we take in the area's fine arts and other community activities. And they will raise our future generations. These young people we educate today are the leaders of tomorrow. They deserve the best Washoe County can offer. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan, looking to see, and... I don't think so. Thank you very much for being here.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate it. Mr. Parks, welcome, sir.
Thank you. It's quite an honor to be here, actually. I've been so looking forward to the possibility of a dialogue with some of you. I've been an outspoken critic of this body for quite some time. you look at my resume, in the packet that I submitted, there are so many things in that resume that could not be included. I'm a member of a very distinct and small, fortunately, club that few people understand. I've led soldiers in combat. And unless you're a first responder, thank you for your service to our community, sir, you can't relate to that. You don't know what it takes. In my military service, we have a distinct saying that leaders are not born, they're made. And that is absolutely true. As members of this body, not only are you representatives of the people that you serve, but you're also expected to lead. Now, if you look up, look at the makeup of some of the political bodies in this nation, you'll see people that couldn't lead water downhill on their best day. That's a tragedy. They cannot fulfill the obligations that they are tasked with. They don't have that basic ability. In my myriad travels throughout this life, I took those military skills, the leadership, the logistics, et cetera, et cetera, and applied them to other jobs. I am a leader. I am a team builder. I understand logistics at a level that few people can relate to. There's a distinct problem within Washoe County, and for that matter, across the board in Nevada, with our school systems. We have to fix this. I want to be part of that solution. I have a proven track record that lends me a distinct advantage over a lot of other people. I understand people. I understand team building. I understand what it takes to make those hard decisions when they have to be made.
Mr. Parks, you pause for a minute. I'm gonna jump in, I'm gonna go back to team building, sir, as you mentioned your experience in that. What would be your strategy, from a team-building standpoint, is to become, begin to be able to turn a page and become a part of a team that you've not really indicated up until now that you wanted to be a part of?
Well, thank you for that question.
You're very welcome, sir. You should have expected it.
I did.
You probably did.
The first thing that we have to do as a team is identify what the problem is. And then develop a plan to fix that problem. Personalities aside, egos aside, you know, my one huge failing, well, I have a lot of faults, but my biggest fault is I never came to grips with the fact that total candor is not a virtue. If it's wrong, I'm gonna tell you, it's wrong. I'm not gonna play patty cake with you. I'm gonna tell you flat out. This is a problem, and it has to be addressed. We're not gonna gloss it over, we're not gonna set it aside. We're gonna address it, and we're gonna fix it. My, I've always been in that position where I got all the problem children in my unit. Or when I was the security manager for one of the distribution centers for one of the largest online retail stores in the country, I always got all the problem children because I can fix them. I know how to motivate. I know how to incentivize. That's what I bring to the table. There's problems here in Washoe County. There's problems in this state. But our children deserve our best efforts. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. Ms. Ryan, welcome here. Bring the mic down, may your... Welcome, ma'am, thank you for being here.
Thank you very much for having me. Hello, my name is Kristen Ryan, and I'm looking to fill the seat for trustee that's open. You're probably looking at me and wondering, why is a 29-year-old woman running for the Board of Trustees? I'm probably one of the youngest, if not the youngest, to do this. Most recently, I resigned from my spot as an English teacher at a local high school. And it kind of broke my heart. I went in a direction of real estate, and I was really sad to leave the classroom. I love the classroom, I love the students, I love this school district. And when I saw this opportunity, I thought, wow, I get to sit next to decision-makers, stakeholders, people in the community, and still make a difference. I care about this community, and I have a young son who is just over one years old. So in a few years, he will be going through this school district. So I have the most genuine motives. I want my son to go through an amazing school district. I still care about the community and the school, the parents, the families, the students. And I, and I think this is a perfect way to do it. I have the most recent experience inside of the classroom for the past four years, and I know what it's like. I know what it's like being in the school district, in the building, with the students and the admin and the teachers. I know what it's like dealing with parents and the community and building rich relationships with them and being able to talk to them and compromise, find solutions, whatever it may be. Throughout this extremely tough year, I've been really honored to get to know students on the hybrid level through distance learning and hopefully make them the most successful possible through problem-solving, negotiation, hard work, and support, and love, because I care. My background is a little unconventional, but let me tell you a little bit of why I'm perfect for this. I started and I graduated with a degree from California State University Sacramento with a degree in interpersonal communications. That allows me excellent communication skills with one-on-one people and also in large groups. I then went to Orlando, Florida, to work at Walt Disney World, Florida. And that gave me the most amazing customer service. I was able to work from people all over the country, all over the world, and help them through guest relations and things like that. When that internship ended, I moved home and pursued another dream of becoming a flight attendant for Virgin America. Also, a dream, great, but I decided I didn't want to pour Diet Coke on an airplane for people that were mean to me. So although that was awesome, and I got to travel the world, gave me another great experience with dealing with people who might be upset, angry, whatever it may be, I got to be able to use those skills to work with them. When I met my husband, I moved to Reno, and I got my master's in education at the University of Nevada Reno. That gave me the most recent tools and education and research to be able to work with the community, work with schools, and work with this board to support, to know, to love the kids, to figure out problems, and to solve the problems, to be a support with my most recent experience in the classroom. Through my time while getting my license, I was able to work at a variety of schools, middle schools, elementary schools, subbing, read by grade three aide, push-in aide, a variety of different schools. I've taught English at two other different schools as well. So through all of this, all of my life experience, my current, most recent experience inside of the classroom makes me the perfect candidate to sit by you, just give you a fresh perspective on what's been happening, a younger side of things with maybe a little less life experience than other amazing candidates. But I think that I am the perfect person for this role. And I welcome any questions that you might have, and I really hope I get the opportunity to sit by you.
Thank you for being here, Ms. Ryan. I do have a question for you. Want to go back to, and looking at the, at your resume, I know you spent a little bit of time in terms of a full teaching position as peers, a few years at Reno High School. And then just made a shift. And so, again, just wondering, what was it that caused that shift? Why did that work best for you?
It wasn't easy. But this past year, as everyone knows, is extremely difficult. And there was a variety of issues that happened. And this year was hard. So when I was looking at my life and my young son and my family, I thought, well, I need to make a shift. That's right for me and my family. And... That's right for me and my family and teaching's always gonna be there and I hope this will provide me the opportunity to do that. But I did make the shift because of all of the difficulties.
I appreciate that, Ms. Ryan. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your time.
Okay, I'll see any other questions. Thank you for being here. Welcome, Mr. Kendall. Thank you for being here, sir.
Good morning. My name's Edwards Kendall.
Pull that mic up just a little bit. Okay.
My name's Edwards Kendall and I've had the opportunity to meet a lot of you, usually on the other side of the table. The reason I want to be part of District C trustee is through my career with the school district, 20 years, I got to protect and serve Nevada's future. And now that I'm retired, I have the ability to continue to protect and serve Nevada's future. I've had the distinction of living in District C and working in District C and I've had the ability to meet numerous principals, teachers, parents, staff, and I would like to be a voice for all those. And in this day and age, what's going on, I wanted to come forward and offer my expertise. I was a union president for 15 years. Most of that, I served as the union president. So I'm definitely aware of open meeting laws, how to conduct public meetings. I also know that oftentimes you will work with difficult people. One thing Chief Chaminade will testify, I believe in compromise. I like to find solutions and be a, not part of the problem, but I'd like to be the problem solver. Oftentimes I know, we can't make everybody happy, but we can make some of the people happy some of the times. And that's what I would like to bring forward to the board and I appreciate my time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kendall. See if there are any questions here? Okay, don't see any. Thank you, sir, for being here.
Mark Sutton.
Mr. Sutton? Okay, don't see him here.
Pamela Story. Okay.
Welcome, Mr. McCaffrey. Thank you for being here, sir.
Thanks for having me. Morning, trustees. This is Lieutenant Neil, due counsel. Hi, JJ. My name is Sean McCaffrey and I'm seeking the position of trustee for District C and I believe I can provide a lot of value to this board, I really do. First and foremost, because I care about education. And I've supported the school district through board work and volunteer work for many, many years. Currently, I'm on the Board of Directors for the Washoe Education Foundation. Trustee Thinkpen, I'm not sure if you're familiar with the organization or not, trustee Church are new, but I could spend five minutes talking about the virtues and the impact of that organization just by itself due to the great work of the fabulous Karen Swob. And for those interested, I could spend some time with you afterwards if you're interested in wanting more information about the organization, but the impact's been incredible, it really has. And then prior to that, I was on the board for the Education Alliance. In 2014, we went through the transition of leadership and hired Kendall Winsky. I'm sure you're all familiar with the organization, the great impact and work that we, that they do. And later in the summer, I transitioned from a staff, from a board position to a staff position to lead the Partners in Education Initiative. And that's where I really got familiar with District C because, I'll give you a couple of examples. Number one, at that time, there were, I believe, 15 middle schools and each of the middle schools had their own career day where they bring in businesses to help understand, help kids understand, uh, grade 13 college and career pathways. And imagine being Amazon, Zulily, blockchain or YesCo and being asked to go to 15 different middle schools to talk about career opportunities. It's a big lift, especially if you're looking at going to Cold Springs or O'Brien Middle School, even Shaw Middle School. So you can imagine that many of those schools and many of the experiences weren't quite equitable across the board. And it's a big lift for these businesses to respond to 15 different requests. So I recognized that there was a gap and there's also a disparity in the experience for these kids, like, well, how can we make this thing better? So how many have been, have you guys been to the eighth grade career expo at the Innovation Center? Yes, it's been fantastic. Trustee Thinkpen, you probably haven't yet because you're, you're new and so is trustee Church. But 2015 was the first year of the eighth grade career expo. I partnered with Dana Ryan and Keely Killian along with the district supports for buses and, and for transportation, for lunches, so that every kid could have the same experience. So at this career expo, you've got hundreds of businesses providing thousands of, of pathways for grade 13, for these kids to learn and get exposed to different opportunities and then make better informed decision making about whether I mean, selecting, selecting their signature academies as well as high school coursework. Very, very impactful. And again, impactful for District C just because of, of how far out those schools are in our community. And the second thing I want to bring to your attention is, I don't know if you knew this or not, but 89436 is the highest per capita household income in the state of Nevada. I was surprised when I found that out. Well, District C, of course, also takes into consideration the north end of Sun Valley as well as all of North Valleys. And you know there's disparity in the communities and as you cross 395 into North, North Valleys, it's almost like that part of the community is segmented from the rest of Washoe County. And at the time, again, 2014, the data supported that the academic achievement in that area was, was lower than the rest of the school district and there was a lot of challenges in regard to trying to get access to resources and things like that. So I'm like, okay, so partners in education, how can we make this thing better for all this, all the students out here? How can we build to help support all 7, 3,500 students out in this, in this neck of the woods? So my idea was to create an ecosystem. An ecosystem was built like this. Uh, there's a ton of industry out in the neck of the woods. There's a lot of industries, a lot of businesses. Wouldn't it be great if they all worked together and collaborated and shared resources, financial resource, pooled financial resources together along with volunteer resources, along with other resources to help rising tide carries all boats? So I got with all of the nine principles. We agreed on very specific streamlined agendas, which is more volunteers in the classroom. It was funding for, for, for field trips along with opening the doors up for these students to take advantage of walking into different businesses and learn college and career pathways. I took that message and it was my quest to go knock on every door in the North Valleys. And within a few weeks, Eden, Chamber of Commerce, Washington County Commission, Reno City Council, Amazon, Epplerdomy, banks, credit unions, grocery stores, we had so much interest to support this initiative to great success. And the last thing I want to share with you as I look around this table is that there's one group underrepresented and that's the, of the parents of invading students right now. I'm a proud parent of a 14, of a 14-year-old and I bring that, that wisdom and passion to this morning, sir.
I appreciate you speed up at the end there, sir.
Say it faster. Thank you very much.
Thank you for being here, sir. Mr. Rodriguez, welcome, sir. Thank you for being here.
Thank you, ma'am. Good morning. And I do also have some additional letters of reference that I'll read to everyone. Well, good morning. I want to thank everyone for being here and this is a tough crowd. So I just kind of go a little bit about, you know, who I am. You guys have my application and you have my references and I'll just, you know, who, who am I? Why am I coming here? So I do want to start that I was born in Texas. My parents, we moved out here when I was a teenager and I've called Nevada my home ever since and spent my whole adult life in public service. I started fighting fire with the Bureau of Land Management at the age of 18, out here instead. And then I got into our Nevada National Guard where I served for 11 years and done numerous, been activated multiple times. Did most of my time as active duty then did actually do my one week a month, two weeks a year. I served in Afghanistan and Haiti. So I've seen, seen some interesting stuff, but through my military career, I promoted, I made soldiers, trained them and served with them side by side of all different walks of life. It was really beneficial to me, serving with people of different races, different backgrounds. It was one of my best, it was one of the best moments of my life. I got into law enforcement, which is where I currently work now in 2006, starting in law enforcement. And so between the fire, military and law enforcement, people don't call us when they're having their best day. So you learn to deal with problems that people are experiencing and having. Within that as well, I also got into volunteering. I was a den leader for my son's boy scout groups. I was a baseball coach for them. I got into volunteering on different boards as well. I reached out to Astro Delgado when I lived in the city of Reno at the time, asked him, I want to get more involved. And I got onto the Reno Historical Resource Commission, the Access Advisory Committee and served on those boards when I moved to Sparks where I live now, District C. I've been there for some time. I got involved with the Sparks Board as well, that's, I'm on Sparks Citizen Advisory Committee now. And not just there, I also got on to, my current work, I work for the State Fire Marshal Division where I actually supervise and oversee the Investigation Enforcement Bureau. So we handle a lot of big cases, like the Lovak Carson Fire, burned down the majority of the city, the Argentale Hall explosion, that was actually my case. So I serve and work and team build a lot. And part of that is also learning when to give and compromise a lot. I know some people said, they see problems here within the school district. I actually don't see problems, I see opportunities for change and betterment. So having that outlook of being positive, okay, here's, we got this problem, let's work together. I've done this service since the age of 18, so my whole adult life, I've given to public service in more ways than one and I want to continue and bring that here.
Mr. Rodriguez, I want to jump in because that's a great place for this question. You do have a history of, of public service in your, in your background and thank you for that. Why, why education though? Why this, why this role in public service?
Um, you know, I hate to be too shady, but like a lot of the people here are saying, children, these are our future. I've got three kids in three different schools here. These are going to be our future. So these are going to be our future firefighters, they're going to be our future doctors, tradesmen, just, you know, I don't want to repeat what people are saying, but it's so true. So these are going to be the future. I want my kids and I want my neighborhood's kids to have a future here. So when they do graduate high school, they're able to go into trades, they're able to go in our military, law enforcement, wherever, and give them that benefit, give them that base education. And it's not just there. You know, I was reading this and it's so true, tolerance as well. We teach them math, we teach them this, we do have, we have great programs, but also teach them, hey, you get into the community, you want to serve with different people, you want to work with different people, different backgrounds, you know, different ideas and to be tolerant of that as well. So I'd like to see that here in our school district.
Thank you. You still have time. I just want to thank you for that response.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Any other, any, oh, I, oh, I do see there is a question. Trustee Church, you have a question? Go ahead, sir.
Mr. Rodriguez, yeah, thank you. Mr. Rodriguez mentions his, you know, Hispanic background. Does he speak Spanish?
Unfortunately, I was a trade that didn't take. Honestly, I wish I did. My parents, so I grew up in a very poor, I'll just say how it is. So my mom would actually have four to five jobs. My dad actually got injured during, while working and a lot that didn't try, just the other time I didn't take.
I appreciate that. Thank you. You get that, trustee Church? You get it, sir? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Rodriguez. Thank you for being here.
Cecilia Alonso.
Ms. Alonso? Ms. Cassidy, welcome. Pull that mic down a little bit, we'll hear you better. Okay. Thank you. Welcome, ma'am. Thank you for being here.
Thank you. Thank you for having me. Thank you all for your time and your commitment to our community. I appreciate you all and I'm grateful for this opportunity. I attended Washoe County Schools. I taught Wash, in Washoe County as a substitute teacher and an outdoor educator and I assisted in leading workshops for educators in outdoor education and Common Core. I spent six years working with local nonprofits as volunteer board members and as a shelter operations director for our place. I have a Bachelor of Science in Biology from UNR and a master's degree in Religious Leadership. I am an ordained minister and a hospice chaplain. I'm also a third generation Nevadan who grew up in Washoe County and attended public schools here. I have not only a love for this area, but also a firm understanding of our history, of our culture and of our struggles and of our strengths. And so I'd like to go off of my prepared talk for today because of the letter that I found on my seat this morning. And I think it's important that we talk about our struggles and our strengths. I think that it's important that we don't ignore them. So I'm gonna share a story with you about my child. Would, you don't know about the?
Oh, you know, please, go ahead. I don't want to take your time. You go right ahead.
Okay.
Yes.
I want to share a story about my youngest. My youngest daughter was crying one night and I asked her what was wrong. She was in kindergarten at the time. And she said, mommy, and I'm sorry, this is a vulnerable story and I know I have, anyway. She said, mommy, I'm a brown-skinned girl, right? And I said, yeah, honey, you have beautiful brown skin. And she said, mommy, my friend so-and-so in my classroom, she's a black-skinned girl, right? And I said, yes, honey, she has beautiful black skin. And she said, well, mom, we had an active shooter drill today, so when the shooter comes into our school, they're gonna come into our classroom first, right? When I tell you that, broke my heart and I wasn't ready. So I guess what I wanted to share with that story, based on this letter that was on my seat, is the racism is alive in our classrooms, as are other issues that keep our children from learning and safety. Talking about it is not partisan or political. Allowing our teachers to have these discussions does not interfere with teaching of writing and arithmetic and it does prepare them for life after school. So thank you. Thank you for your time and I appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you, Ms. Cassidy. Let's see if we have any, any questions. I don't, I don't think, oh, it's okay. Let's, let's, don't walk away yet, just in case. Okay. I, I guess I just, just from an interest standpoint, your undergraduate degree and your master's degrees are very, very different. Why the shift?
Absolutely, very different. I, but they complement each other so well. I love science. I love math. I was drawn to biology and then after I had my last child, I had a little bit of time off work and so I was doing a lot of introspection as we do when we're new mothers and realized that I also wanted to look into religious leadership. I did a couple of internships at St. Mary's through their Chaplaincy Program or their CPE Program. It's Clinical Pastoral Education. And I fell in love with supporting people through their hardest moments.
I appreciate that. Thank you, Ms. Cassidy. Yes, see, the lad on, trustee Calvert, have a question?
Could you go into a little bit more about how your daughter is coping with her situation?
She's 10 now and so we have had many conversations. You know, she, she's doing as well as can be expected in our environment. We are, we have a lot of conversations about where our power is and also where we, I mean, it's back to Mr. Rogers, right? You look for the helpers and that's what we talk about. We look for the helpers and we are helpers.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cassidy. I think we're, we're good. Okay. Thank you so much, ma'am. Thank you for being here.
Verita Black-Porthrow.
Welcome, Ms. Prothrow, thank you for being here.
Thank you, thank you so much for the opportunity. Well, first, I think I should introduce myself a little bit more than within the documents. I'm a native Nevadaan, and I attended Washoe County Schools, and I have UNR and Leslie University for my masters. I have a son in the school district right now, Skylar. I've wanted to be a part of this board because education is so important to me. I grew up with, my, my parents are both Southerners, and they grew up in segregated school systems. And when I was a teenager, I had the opportunity to see where my mother lived, and talk about going to school uphill, walking uphill both ways. When I saw what she had to go through just to get to school, and why she would always say, you have such an opportunity, you just don't know how hard it was for us to just even get to school. And they lived in the bio, and there really weren't roads, it was snake-infested, and that was the reality of it. So when, you know, I could just walk down the street and go into a nice classroom with pub bathrooms and a lunchroom, she said, you, this is great, you have a wonderful opportunity. Make sure you get a good education, and make sure you always serve your community. So this would be a wonderful way for me to use all the experience that I've had, all the jobs that I've worked in, and all the community, other community service that I've done, to really, I think, impact, to impact the community. We, we live in scary times, changing times. The, the school board has to meet those challenges. The superintendent has an awesome job of working with all these employees, and then with the children. And the children in this community will not only impact this community, but they're going to impact the whole nation. We must prepare them for that, we must prepare them for a changing world and a changing economy. It's so important. Some of my relevant experience for working with different communities, I worked for the federal government, I worked in two congressional offices, and when people came in and they had questions, they were not happy. By the time they got to us, they'd, they'd been hung up on, denial letters, people were just nasty and rude to them, and when they, when they got to us, they wanted somebody to just listen. And so I became a very good listener, and figuring out ways to help best meet their There's so many stories that I could tell you about that, I wish I had, I wish I had a lot more time. Leadership, I had a chance to lead those offices, work with staff, make sure that they also met the needs of people and saw the importance of listening. Sometimes people just need you to listen. It's so important, just to listen. And I come to this board, just wanting to help, wanting to bring all of my experiences of working with the community, and having a son in the system, and working with, in my church. I come with no agenda. I'm not trying to push one thing or the other, I don't want to do that. And Dr. Alsberry talked about the importance of people not doing that, not having an agenda when they come in, other than to serve and be a part of the team and come up with the best solutions. I believe we can have a world-class school system if we just put our time and energy into the right places. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Prothrow, are there any questions? Okay, don't see any, thank you so much. Oh wait, I do see one, trustee Church?
Yes, thank you very much. No candidate has received more emails, at least that I've seen, pro and con phone calls, et cetera, than this lady. And my question that some of the critics have come up with is that you serve on a board, you know, I'm told, so maybe you can confirm, number one, I'm told that you're new to the district, that you have residences elsewhere, so I want you to address that, as well as the fact that they say that you serve on a board with the board president, Ms. Taylor, and my question is your ability to be independent.
Okay, I'm not sure I understand the residency. My, my house is in 894 through 6, that's where I live, in Spanish Springs.
We have a number of people that have lived in the community a long time. Are you new to the, to the Northern Nevada, correct, to the North County community?
Well, I was born and raised in Reno, so I've been a part of Washoe County my entire life. I was born at Washoe Med.
I'm sorry, I was referring to the district, District C, Andrew Caddell's former district.
I have been in District C about two years.
Okay, thank you. And then, there was a question, again, critics, so we might as well address it, that you, Ms. Taylor was active in your last, President Taylor was active in your last campaign, that you served together on a different board, and so they raised, the critics raised the issue of your ability to be independent.
Ms. Taylor and I, Dr. Taylor and I, served on a board together about 20 years ago, on the Northern Nevada Black Cultural Awareness Society. I'm not sure if she's still a part of that board, I know that I am not. I have not been a part of it in about 20 years. An active board member, I've participated, I help plan things, or, you know, I'll, I'll go out for events and help with that, but I have not been an active board member, excuse me, for about 20 years.
There's an expression that false statements can get around the world before the truth gets its shoes on, so I wanted to give you that opportunity, and thank you very much, I appreciate it.
And then, if I might add, that I do still, I do own a home in Hidden Valley, but I do not live in it.
I got the thumbs up, so it looks like trustee Church has got his answers, questions answered, so thank you very much. Seeing others, no more. Thank you very much, Ms. Prothrow.
Thank you so much.
Roger Edwards.
Mr. Edwards, either way you want to, sir.
This one's a little more my height.
Okay. Welcome, sir, stand here.
In case you don't know me, I'm Roger Edwards, been here many, many times. I believe that there's no higher thing that a citizen can do but to participate in this, and that's why we're here. I'm amazed at this. This is mind-boggling, nobody wants this job. And we've got 27 applicants or something, this is crazy. You guys are public servants. I'm a public servant retired, but we have to serve the public, it's the highest calling that there can be, and, you know, short of serving God, but, you know, I, my first, my public service started 5 August 1965. Now, for you, folks that don't understand, that's when military guys go off to bootcamp, that's the biggest day of their life, or the worst, it depends, but anyway, they remember that day. That's when my public service started, August F. 1965. And I've served the public, military for 37 years, planning commission, regional planning commission. I currently am vice chairman of the North Valley Citizens Advisory Board, have been in my home in Golden Valley for 27 years. I've been before you guys a lot, and I just loved the, the presentation we got from Dr. Alsberry, he made my case over and over and over, and it's been brought up here so many times. We're here for the kids and for the future of our neighborhood. That's what your job is, that's what our job would be. To do that, we have to cooperate, and I'm ready to cooperate. You know, I've been a manager at the military for, I don't know, 25 years, and you can't get anything done if you don't cooperate. I've learned that lesson, you know, so many times, over and over, and I'm ready to cooperate with anybody. But we have to do, like so many of the speakers before me have talked about, identify the problem, and Dr. Alsberry did that for us. Graduation rates are 34% or something, and then we have to focus on it. I've been a mechanic all my life, and a welder like Dr. Barton. But anyway, you have to fix the problem, identify the problem and fix it, and we have to work together to do that. We can't be adding ancillary nonsense to the curriculum that diverts us from focusing on graduating competent students. We have to do that.
Mr. Edwards, I want to, just because you're in the area where the question I wanted to ask, and I'm sure you can kind of intensify it. As, as you've mentioned, you've come before us before, we know, we know who you are, and that's not a bad thing per se.
Could be.
But, no, yeah, but no, it's not a bad thing, you have a right to come and speak, that's okay. But when you come, you have, you have a habit of kind of lecturing, this is how it feels like on our end, right? And, and the way that's not the friendly, work-together cooperation tone that you're striking now. So what would be your strategy, should you have the opportunity to be a part of this group, what would be your strategy to convince us otherwise?
Well, I would, I would get together with each and every board member and find out where they stand on the bottom line, what they have to offer, how they would change, what they, what their focus is, and then I would manipulate that into a plan that would work to get our kids graduating at 75 or 80%, not 25, 30, 40%. I would have to work with everybody, that's the only way this board works.
Okay, I will, I will say this, you know, the graduation rate is like 80-45%, I'm not sure where the 34 came from?
Well, you can't, you can't lower the requirements and then brag about the rate.
I'm not sure where you got your information from, but the graduation rate is like 80-45%.
I looked at Dr. Alsberry's presentation-
I was here the whole time, he did not speak about our graduation rate at all.
Well, okay, then you were a different presentation than I was. Anyway, we need, we need, that has to be our focus, and I don't think it is, and I think we just need to work together to identify the problems and to remove distractions from the training, so that we can get to where we need to be. You know, I've done the same thing with the planning commission, with the North Valleys, with the military, with everything else. Identify the problem, you get out the right tool, and you fix it. That's all, we got to fix it. And I can do that. I could help you guys work together with you guys to do that. Otherwise, I wouldn't have applied. Thank you.
Hang on, Ms. Edwards, let's see if anyone has any questions before you take any, okay? Okay, don't see any, thank you, sir.
You bet.
That is everyone.
Okay, well, thank you to everyone who, who took some time to make their comments, and whether via Zoom, for one applicant, and then for those of you who are here, why don't we, as a board, before we dive into this, why don't we take a break? To just take a break and leave ourselves wherever we need, you may need a break as well, and so why don't we come back at 11 o'clock, my clock here says 10:46, so we'll come back at 11, and get started and begin some conversations. So thank you again to each of you who have been here for this long, and now we're going to jump in it, so we appreciate it, thank you. All right, everyone, it is 11, so why don't we go ahead and get started and reconvene, and then hopefully, when trustee Church pops back in, he'll jump back in, there you are. Okay, great, thank you. Why don't we begin with, if we have any public comment, we'll begin with that, and then we'll bring it back here to the table, and when I say back here, I want to make sure that includes trustee Church for, for conversation, and then we'll talk a little, just remind us of the process we're going to go, we're going to use as we go forward. So JJ, public comment?
Valerie Fianaca.
Ms. Fianaca, oh, there you are.
I'm here.
Yes, you are.
Sorry.
Welcome, and, no, just, just as a reminder, and you're probably already into, this is about this agenda item.
Yes, ma'am.
Awesome, thank you, Ms. Fianaca, you know the routine?
I do.
Mm-hmm.
I'm here today in support of candidate Bruce Parks. He's an honest, caring, and involved individual who shows up and speaks up, as we all know. He's involved in all aspects of our community, not just the school. Bruce teaches the Constitution. As we are all aware, the board has tried to silence public opinion, that does not align with their own, including my own. Intimately, I'm, I'm really involved with that one. What a great opportunity you have to be inclusive of parent voice at this point in time. Conflict oftentimes brings great change, necessary positive change. This is an opportunity for the board to bring together and not further divide our community. Nothing can stop what's coming, elections are coming, the public will speak. Step out on a limb here, I urge you all, and support diversity of opinion. You might be surprised what comes of it.
Thank you, Ms. Fianaca.
Frank Perez.
Mr. Perez, welcome, sir.
Trustees, thank you. So, good morning, my name is Frank Perez. I'm here on behalf of the Northern Nevada Subcommittee for the Nevada Latinos Initiative. The Subcommittee was first formed in reaction to COVID-19, as it did a substantial amount of damage to the Latino community, almost 50%, at a point, almost 50% of the active cases here in Washoe County were of, were Latino persons. The Subcommittee includes several people here in our community, college presidents, university professors, social workers, communication experts, public servants, and more. We're here today, or I'm here today, to support, to show our support for Ms. Candy Lorenzo for the position of Washoe County School Board Trustee for District C. We feel that she has the capacity to serve all the students here in our county judiciously. She's a person we believe that can work with all the trustees here today, and work on the progress that you have built upon. Additionally, we feel that she can be a person that will fill a much-needed void in the community, and that's a bridge to the Spanish-speaking community, the largest minority group in the district. It's important to have a diverse board that brings a variety of experiences and input from the different communities here in our county. That's why we sent, we did send in a unified letter behind Ms. Lorenzo, we did send it to the public comment email. And finally, I want to conclude by saying, while the Subcommittee is 100% behind Ms. Lorenzo, I can't leave here without mentioning and applauding two other persons for putting their name in this difficult process, and that's Ms. Cecilia Alonso, who I've worked with for nearly seven years in the community, and Verita Black Prothrow, who I know is a true public servant. Both would be great additions. Again, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Perez.
John Appolito.
Mr. Appolito? Welcome, sir, you as well know the routine?
Thank you, my name is John Appolito, I'm a former K-12 teacher, I have two kids left in the district. I'd like to thank all the candidates for applying, I hope you know what you're in for. I've been intimately involved with this board for 12 years, longer than any member up there. The letter that one candidate mentioned was the opinion piece that President Taylor wrote that the RGJ published on Sunday. I wrote a response that's on the back. If you didn't get one, I have more. The letter, one of the, or, excuse me, I realize this is a nonpartisan seat, but please realize, you will be replacing a conservative Republican, Andrew Caudill. To replace Mr. Caudill with someone with opposing views to his would further show that this board is ignoring the people in District C. One of the candidates, who's a friend of President Taylor, has not only shown she is politically very far left of center, she has shown her disdain for Republicans. I spent about 30 minutes on her Facebook page and found these 18 posts that show exactly what I'm talking about. Here's a copy for the board, I also have a copy for her. If the goal is to keep our teachers, staff, parents, and community divided, appoint her. If not, throw her out in the first round. My understanding is this candidate contributed to Angie's campaign, and they are friends. If that's true, my opinion is Angie Taylor should recuse herself from this vote. My wife is also a Democrat- My wife is also a Democrat. She would never post one of these things that this woman posted. This candidate is a college-educated adult, and if she does not realize how what she posts on Facebook will likely affect her future today or next time, how do we expect children as young as kindergarten to know what it's okay to share privately with all these education vendors the district requires them to use? These education vendors know much more about our children than Facebook, Google, and other social media vendors will ever know about us adults. Students share schoolwork, personal information, including their ideals, attitudes, and beliefs with numerous education vendors. All this data and information goes into a black hole. Almost everything these kids share with education vendors will never be seen by their parents.
Mr. Eppolito, you know, I got to bring you back to the agenda item.
If you want to cut me off, I can come back at the end.
No, I just need to keep you on the agenda item, sir. And you're certainly welcome to come back at the end. You know that.
Well, it's truly up to you, Angie. I've got 35 seconds left. Do you want me to finish it now or come back at the end?
It's, I need to stay consistent. I can't do for time. So if it's on the agenda item, would love to hear what else you have. Otherwise, I'm sorry, I'm going to have to ask you the way to the end.
Okey-dokey. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Matt Tru.
Welcome, Mr. Tru. Welcome back, sir.
Good morning. Thank you for putting this on, and I hope you guys are actually giving fair and considerate consideration to all of the candidates, even those we know you don't necessarily agree with or see eye to eye with. My, you know, my, I'm a father first, above all things, when I'm talking to you guys and thinking about, you know, what kind of people we should be, you know, putting forward. And my, two of my younger sons were both S.I.P. and I.E.P. children, and one of them still is. And I was very, very, very encouraged to hear a candidate talk about her experience with that. I think there needs to be more of that among you. I think that it's, having the experience that I've had as a parent all these years and also dealing with about 900 other special needs kids in the district that I interact with on a regular basis, I can just tell you, we feel like very grateful for the efforts that are made, but there's also some problems that need to be addressed by, you know, from the top down about how those programs are handled. Namely, you know, like disciplinary actions, you know. There's all this leeway when you're a I.E.P., and the kid is allowed to just keep offending and offending and offending, and it's like endless.
Mr. Tru, I'm sorry, I got to bring you back to the agenda item, sir, about the appointment.
Yeah, so the appointment. So I looked at all of these people's social medias that have spoken so far. And, you know, it is concerning when you have people that are, you know, claiming they don't come here with an agenda, and they clearly have very strong opinions, which is okay. This is America, and we want to have opinions. But I was not able to find that with Paxton. I didn't see, I don't know what her politics are, but I do know she seems to be highly qualified to deal with the issues that I care about as a parent in this district. I have strong political opinions, but I don't know that it's correct or appropriate for people that are serving and working with our children to be putting out, you know, these kinds of things as we have had a terrible experience as parents, as conservative parents. We live in an almost exclusively Hispanic neighborhood, okay? Mr. McCaffrey spoke eloquently about the situation in our district, where you can leave where I live, which is extremely impoverished, and go about a half a mile, and you are on a hill, surrounded by big, beautiful homes. And we want someone up there that can kind of navigate that and understand it. And I fully support, you know, Mr. Otto, Mrs. Paxton. Prero, I thought was awesome, but I really oppose this lady over here. I don't... I'm sure she's a wonderful person, but we really have to have respect and trust with what you guys are doing, and thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tru.
That's all I have.
Thank you, JJ. Okay, thank you, everyone, for those public comments. We'll bring it back here to the day. Just as a reminder, this is time for us to just share some thoughts. I'm going to actually just go around and ask everyone to share their thoughts so that we all have an opportunity. We certainly want to focus on those things that are positive to the extent that we can, for sure, because these folks have all thrown their hats into the ring, right? Public comment is one thing, but these are our conversations, and we want to just be as respectful as we can as we make this very difficult decision. After we've all gone around and just shared a couple of comments, we will, then we will vote. We do have, we all have a sheet that's been given to us. And then I will ask everyone to pick their top five, and then we'll turn these into JJ. And then she will compile them and read them. These, just so we know, these are our public documents. Everyone will know our votes as they should, okay? And then from there, we'll look at where all the votes fall and then make some decisions moving forward as to who goes to our next phase today, unless it's a clear five when we vote, which it may be. That never happens, but, you know, you never know, right? And then we'll just continue the work until we get down to the group. We're looking for approximately three to five, you know, we didn't, in the motion, we specifically didn't nail it down to a specific number, a specific number, because there will be a natural break. So just as a reminder, any of our colleagues, and I want to make sure I'm not leaving you out, Trustee Church, anybody have any questions on how the process, I will move forward from a board standpoint? Okay, just before we get comments, what I will say, again, is just a huge thank you to all of the 27 candidates that put their name in. It is not, it's not an easy thing to do, and especially because this has to be so public. But that's the law, of course, and that's what we follow. But we know it's a big, big step, and I believe, as I see colleagues nodding, I think we're all very appreciative of your willingness to throw your hat in the ring and be considerate, especially in such a public process and for such an important, an important role. A lot of challenges ahead. We're certainly proud of the progress that we've made, but still much work to do as we move forward. So we're looking to add someone else who's going to add value to our team as we move forward, so. All right, that being said, trustees, anyone volunteering to go first, or we'll just go around and now? Calling people. Did I miss anything? Counsel, please.
So if everyone, because we can't have a secret vote, make sure that you write your name on top of the ballot sheet. So maybe perhaps you do that now, so we can have that for the public record. And then I wasn't sure if we're going to need to do like we've done in the past, where our first candidate gets five points, you give them the highest ranking, or are you just going to?
Yes, let's do the rating system as we've done in the past. Thank you for that reminder. So as we put our five, we're going to put 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 on our list.
And just remember, five is your first pick.
Yes.
You get the most points, right?
Yes.
And then four would be your second pick, et cetera.
Trustee Church, we want to make sure, sometimes in the, and you're good, okay. So, and I know you're communicating with JJ to get your form. JJ's always way ahead of me on that stuff. Okay, as a reminder, so everyone put your name on it, and then we're going to pick our top five. Not just select our top five, but we're going to rate them as well. And then the point system will dictate how we go forward from there. Thank you, counsel. Other? No, good. Okay, anyone volunteering to go first? I see you're leaving, and trustee Thigpen, thank you, sir.
Good eye. Thank you, Madam President. I think my, are we just discussing who our top pick would be for right now?
Discuss your thoughts on the, not the process as a whole, because we've already, we thank people, and we certainly, we're certainly appreciative of, this is our time for us to review candidates. And I know it's a little uncomfortable because we're talking about people, and we certainly want to be respectful. I mean, that's part of the hesitation that you may hear or pick up if you're in the audience or watching online, is everybody wants to be, we want to be respectful. And we certainly really, really appreciate you throwing your hat in the ring. In a lot of ways, this is a more public process sometimes than even running for an election because it's so intense right here. Your name's right there with the list of other people. There are a couple of us that actually, at some point or another, served as, being appointed. Dr. Nicolet and myself both had opportunities of that, and so we, of course, now fully elected, but, yes, we sympathize. We certainly sympathize. So trustee Thigpen, we'll start with you.
Thank you, Madam President. I'll just share some initial thoughts. First of all, yes, thanks to everyone that has thrown their hat in the ring as a new trustee and also as an outgoing trustee to the health issues. It is a very tough job. It's very demanding, and you're going to have to work really as a team. And I worked really well with Andrew Cottle. We, I told, I often said behind the scenes, we were the odd couple, motioning and seconding each other's things. I think there's a few folks that really stand out really strong for me. Mr. John Gualtney, really impressed by his years of service and just the knowledge there, especially having served on the State Board of Education. I'm looking at the list here. I think that, where is she at? Sorry. There's so many names, guys. Candy Lorenzo, I truly think she would be a voice that we need on this board. Often, we've talked about that we struggle to reach out to the Latinx community and find ways to do that. And I think that she could help us achieve that. So those are kind of my two strong initial thoughts, and I welcome the thoughts of my colleagues.
Thank you, trustee Thigpen. I see Clerk Menedo, please.
Yes, I would concur, but I really liked, let me see. Mr. McCaffrey seemed to have a real passion for the North Valleys. And I lived in the North Valleys for most of my years here. And it's hard being up there because it is almost like a different world. And I just appreciated his passion for the North Valleys, and that stood out to me. Thank you.
Thank you, Clerk Menedo. I'm going to turn this way, and trustee Church, when you're ready to jump in, go ahead and throw your hand up, sir. We have a couple more we want to hear from as well. We're looking? No? Okay, so I'll just go ahead and, no, his hand is not quite, oh, he's up now, okay. All right, trustee Church, we'll go to you, sir.
Thank you. Before I discuss the candidate, it's kind of like what you mentioned. My personal score sheet, the first thing I kind of looked for, and I want to share this with the board, was I'd consider an outsider a plus. Somebody that taught within the district, yeah, that's a great qualification, but an outsider brings what one person stated was a new perspective. And then also, I think extremely important is that I don't want an activist. Either side, it's a two-way street. And of course, I have to ask myself, who can pass the board? As much as I'd like to sit next to Mr. Parks, I recognize that's not going to happen. But at the same time, I think there are people on the other side that are activists. And I'm going to be very specific. That includes Ms. Black Prothor. I've looked at her Facebook, very divisive. And I want a team player that can work with all sides. So the people from the right or the far left, I think, don't make the cut, in my opinion. I also want to point out that we're managing almost a billion-dollar budget. And so I looked at that, not just the education of the kids, but the budget that pays for that. And we set the policy. We don't specifically educate ourselves as board members. And I also thought, who's going to complement the existing board? So, you know, I looked at all the backgrounds of us as board members, and then I wanted somebody that would complement that, not necessarily duplicate that. As I mentioned, I have to be a realist. I'm often the one-to-six vote who can pass the board. And I think you'll be surprised at one of my picks when that comes up. And last, and it is last, but I would like to see diversity. That's not the, that's the last. I want qualifications first, but I really would like to see more diversity on the board. So those were my factors before I mentioned any names. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Church. No names you're going to throw in right now, sir? We're kind of going around doing that.
Okay, okay.
While you have the phone. Okay, thank you, sir.
Number one, and I'm terrible at pronunciation, but I think it's just a no-brainer, Dr. John Gualtney.
Gualtney, I'll try to help. I'll try to help.
I was close.
You were close.
I was pretty close.
You were close.
And another no-brainer for me was Mr. Gordon Morgan Lindock. Incredible background. I was so impressed. He's a Spanish speaker. He did a lot of time, according to his resume, in Latin America, U.S. Forest Service. He brings that outside perspective, a history professor. To me, that's just a no-brainer. And then the other no-brainer, and this is a person who, my understanding from the critics, has different views than mine. Let's just say I'm conservative. They appear to be not so. But highly qualified is Candace Lorenzo, Spanish speaker, master's degree. And I was really impressed with her HR background, because again, we're having such a hard time hiring people. So those are my top three that I think are no-brainers. And then I got down, there was a couple that were really impressive, but didn't even take the time to Zoom, so I had to consider that. So those people that I considered, Joe Rodriguez, again, Hispanic. He's very involved in the community. Sparks Cab, he's been on many boards, so he knows what it's about to be on a board. He's traveled internationally. So I think he's got kids in the school, so he was my fourth choice. And then Sean McCaffrey, he's another, almost a no-brainer. Master's degree, if I read right, tons of volunteer work within the business community at Washoe County School District. And that business background, I thought that's just an excellent compliment to the board to have that business background come on board versus education. But between his education, his master's degree, his volunteer work in the community, that's, those are my choices, and there were a few backups, but those are what I came up with, and that's the reason why.
Thank you, trustee Church. I want to make sure I'm clear, just, those last two names, Joseph Rodriguez and Sean McCaffrey, you said they did not take the time. They're both here in person.
No, yeah, no, I was, I said there were a number of people that I was very impressed with.
Others, gotcha.
Yeah, but when they didn't bother to even do a Zoom, I had to consider that.
I see.
Yeah, no, I know. I listened carefully to both of those individuals.
Yeah, no, no, you did. That's why I was thrown off a little bit. So thank you for that clarification. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Okay, Dr. Nicolet?
Yes, thank you. And truly, I applaud everyone for taking the time to do this. I mean, this is, for me, it was always a little gut-wrenching to dig deep into my soul and figure out, why do I want to serve and how can I make a difference? And so I truly appreciate, I learned from each one of you, by the way, and thank you for that. So just so you know, some of my thinking in my processes, I looked at the three questions that were to be addressed in the cover letter or even somehow in the resume. So I considered that first and foremost, because that was the first look see. Then the five minutes was just very insightful. Again, I learned a lot, and I really appreciate you taking the time and the heartfelt stories and the experience. I mean, part of me thinks that maybe we should all serve as a board of trustees. Wouldn't we be dynamite? But what a cluster that would be. And then the other thing I looked, I listened for were the words that you used in your five minutes. I looked for passionate words. I looked for your use of students, teachers, community, budgeting, goals, mission, vision. I looked for a lot of words that, to me, shows that you're thinking about those things. And I will tell you that until you sit at the table, well, when you sit at the table, if you're fortunate enough to sit at the table, they bring on new meaning because as we sit as taxpayers and homeowners and mothers and grandmothers, et cetera, et cetera, those words have a particular meaning in our singular life. And when you sit at the table for 61,000 students, 800 employees, et cetera, it takes on a much different meaning. And sometimes it's hard to sift through that because the unique and diverse community that we live in has many opportunities and many challenges. So having said that, I ended up, and I've not put them in order yet because I'd like to hear what everyone has to say. Again, not that I can be easily influenced, but I may have missed something, and that may contribute to my final analysis. So the five names I ended up with was John Gualtney, that's how you say it, Gualtney. Yep, John Gualtney. Ed Kendall, Candy Lorenzo, Sean McCaffrey, and Danielle, Dani Preetro. And that's where I'm at right now. And again, I have not ranked them.
Give me that last name one more time.
Dani, P-R-E-R-O.
Yeah, yeah.
Preiro?
Yeah, yeah, it's like Pirro. I think it was Pirro.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Nicolet. We'll go now to trustee Calvert.
First of all, I'd like to thank each and every one of you for making time in your day to come and put in your application. I know it's a process, and I really do appreciate it because it is a lot that we're talking about. We're talking about our community. We're talking about our students. And we're talking about the future of our... about the future of our community as well. So those were things I listened for, your passion for students, your passion. I grew up in Reno, Nevada, I went to school here. So those were things that I kind of looked for, too. And I know there are people here that have not lived here for very long, but I listened to a lot of things that you had to say that I felt may have been positive and helped to grow our district. I know there are a lot of challenges, there are a lot of things that we need to address possibly in growing our district. I'm not going to say the order that I've ranked you, but these are the people that I felt brought something to the community, and I hope that, I just want to wish you the best. It's a hard job, and there are a lot of hard decisions that we have to make. They're not always popular, the people that make these decisions. And a lot of times, like, I've heard people say, we don't make everyone happy. But my goal is making sure that students in our community do receive an education and something of value that they can take with them for the rest of their lives. Because I work, and I see a lot of times where, I don't know if it's education, but I just feel it's something that's really, really important, that as a community and as a school board, that we focus and make sure that our students are getting what they need once they leave the Washoe County School District. So my choices were for Ms. Black, Sean McCaffrey, Ed Kendall, and Jennifer Cassidy. And thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. And I'll share, I will share mine. Some of the same things, I think it's really, it's so interesting that we're all listening and looking for various things. And one thing I will say, and I continue to be impressed with, with just the commitment of our colleagues, I've already spoken about the applicants, and I mean that very sincerely. But just the depth, I mean, people are taking their time, we're listening, we're taking notes, and so on. And I think that's just, and not that we would do anything differently, but it's always great to just see that. I mean, we're digging, and we're taking this decision very, very, very seriously, again, as we should. There are certain things that I think would be really important in terms of who will add value to us. One, I was looking at, geez, I don't know, now I don't know what I meant by these words, so I'm not going to say it, because I can't explain it. Shoot, that's probably something really good, too.
I know it is.
Dang, dang. All right. But certainly, just in terms of things that I was considering, in terms of looking at, one was, oh, I know what it is. Obviously, the five minutes here, being here, making the time to either be here in person or to be here in Zoom, I think that's really important. We spend a lot of time working on this. It is a lot of time. And this was the opportunity to indicate that there is some time, and you're willing to put that forward. So I think that was really important. Certainly, the responses to the three questions. What's your why? All right, what's your why in it? And then really, adding value in ways that, in ways that we need, I think that's important. My goal is not to, let's get everybody that thinks the same way, that's not how we land in the best place. That's just not how we land in the best place. I know people think differently, or whatever, that's your thing. But our job is to land in the best place we can for students. We have a very, we have a wide variety of perspectives and experiences and views across our community. And so as we consider decisions that we make, hearing the various views, they're really helpful to us. They're more helpful when they're constructive, I need to be honest about that. It's easier for me to hear it, right? Just because I'm human, right? I do try to do a really good job of hearing, but it's so much easier when I think it's constructive and respectful. Something else I think really, really important for me in this, just knowing where we are as a, but we're, as a whole, we're a pretty young board. I mean, we're a pretty young board as a whole. I've been here a little bit longer, I think just a six-and-a-half years-ish for me, right in there. But other than that, we have a couple of members who have two-and-a-half years, and then a couple of members who have a half a year. That's a really young board. And there are some really important decisions to make, and not because someone has to be here 25 years, Laura, I hope not, well, I wouldn't be anyway, but that's not what I'm saying. But just from a leadership standpoint, it's important, especially as we're challenged in ways as a board, you guys know this, that we've never been challenged before. And so having leadership, I think is something that just continues to add to us. When I think about leadership, there are a lot of aspects of it, here are certain aspects of leadership I was looking at. In this instance, is your why, why do you want to serve? Is being willing to, was looking and hearing for some servant leadership in that this is a service role. We are here to serve. And then also, a big part of leadership, which I did hear some of, was being a part of a team. Because the best way for us to get anywhere is to do it together. Work on it, work on it, work on it. No one's going to get everything they want all the time, and that's okay, that's just a part of it, but let's work and work and work and work, and let's do what we're going to do as a team. So that being said, here are the folks that stood out to me, and I'm going to give you just a couple of words as to why. This is in no order, I haven't done the order yet. Dr. Galtney, Jessica, I wanted to say that name first, John, so I wanted to get that out there, because it's kind of cool. His experience, his experience in education, certainly his leadership as well. Ms. Coverly Paxton, her perspective as a retired teacher, we do have a retired teacher, but her experience has been a little bit different in the areas that she's worked, and having had some administrative experience behind her as well. Mr. McCaffrey, his passion really got my attention as well. Let's see, Ms. Prothrow, I know her, you guys know that, yes, she's a friend of mine, we served on the board together 20 years ago. But one thing I know about her is that she listens and tries to get to a place of balance. That's important for me. Ms. Lorenzo, that's a voice that we don't have, that would be an important thing to add to our board. I have six, I haven't quite narrowed it down to. And then there's something about, about the commitment that I heard, the commitment to service of Mr. Rodriguez as well. That was the service piece of it that stood out to me. So those are, those are my views. Those are my views. All right, any other discussion? If not, we'll go ahead and fill out our sheets. And I got to get my six down to five. All right, so let's go ahead, let's go ahead and fill these out, and then we'll get them to JJ. And then give her a few minutes to put them all together.
You want to do, remind that five is your first?
Yes, five, yeah, let me thank you, counsel. Five is whomever, whomever, you put a five by your first pick. Put a five, because they're going to get five points. They're going to get five points. Put a five by your first pick. We don't want to get that backwards, that can change it. Ooh, see? See, thank you, counsel. You have, you have earned your pay today, just for that one thing. Well, that changes everything, though, so remember, five is your first pick.
I'm sorry, I'm so anxious.
Okay, me, too. And Trustee Church, I trust that you've been, we've worked it out with JJ to get your picks. Okay, good, thank you. Just wanted to make sure we didn't leave you out. Okay, give me a moment. So why don't we do this? Why don't we just, we're going to make this just a quick five-minute recess or so for us to get this done, right? So everyone doesn't have to sit there and watch us figure it out, and then get it over to JJ for her to compile it. And then after that, we'll get it, we'll get back together and put all those together, okay? So we'll be in recess here for just a few minutes, so. All right, everyone, we're going to call your attention back to the boardroom, if we may, and this is, this is our process, I just kind of talked through it a little bit. JJ is going to read the trustees and each of the votes, because again, all of that's part of public record, okay? And then we will, and then Chief General Counsel, who worked with her, to put them all together, will read here kind of what the standings are, and then as a board, we'll bring it all back here to the table and decide what our next step should be. Okay? JJ?
President Taylor, Sean McCaffrey, five points. John Galtney, four points. Candy Lorenzo, three points. Verita Black Prothrow, two points. Denise Coverly Paxton, one point. Trustee Meneteau, John Galtney, five points. Sean McCaffrey, four points. Joe Rodriguez, three points. Ed Kendall, two points. Lori Wilson, one point. Trustee Nicolet, John Galtney, oh, sorry, Sean McCaffrey, five points. John Galtney, four points. Candy Lorenzo, three points. Ed Kendall, two points. Danielle Pereiro, one point. Trustee Thigpen, John Galtney, five points. Candy Lorenzo, four points. Joe Rodriguez, three points. Lori Wilson, two points. Verita Black Prothrow, one point. Trustee Calvert, Verita Black Prothrow, five points. Ed Kendall, four points. Sean McCaffrey, three points. Jennifer Cassidy, two points. Joe Rodriguez, one point. Trustee Church, John Galtney, five points. Morgan Lydic, two points. Candy Lorenzo, three points. Sean McCaffrey, two points. Joe Rodriguez, one point.
Was that order, did that, can you do that last, from five to, from five to one on, I think I got mixed up, was I the only one that, I mean, I'm not taking notes, but it's for the public. Can you just go over here from five to one, again, to make sure we have his votes reflected accurately?
John Galtney, five points. Morgan Lydic, four points. Candy Lorenzo, three points. Sean McCaffrey, two points. Joe Rodriguez, one point.
Thank you, very much. Something was out of order there a little bit, so thank you. Okay, then I'll ask Chief General Counsel for the totals.
Yeah, good, good morning, good afternoon, wherever we're at. So we have Mr. Galtney with
Okay, well, he
Sorry. Mr. Galtney with 23 points. Mr. McCaffrey with 19 points. Mr., or Ms. Lorenzo with 13 points. Mr. Rodriguez with eight points. Mr. Kendall with eight points. Ms. Black Prothrow with eight points. Mr. Lydic with four. Ms. Wilson with three. Ms. Cassidy with two. Ms. Pereiro with one. And Ms. Coverly Paxton with one. So as the board may recall, your motion a couple weeks ago was to decide the number that are going forward, and you were looking for clean breaks. It seems that the breaks fall at either, so you have a first place, a second place, a third place, and then you have three tied at fourth place, if you will. And then there's a significant drop-off after that. So it's 23, 19, 13. Then it's 8, 8, 8. Then it's 4, 3, 2, 1, 1.
Okay, thank you, counsel. So we'll bring it back here to the table, there's, go ahead, question? Trustee Thigpen?
Thank you, Madam President. Can you read the, after 13, can you read the names again? I was trying to write fast, but I'm not doing a good job of it.
The three, it sounds like the three ties for fourth place? Is that what we're looking, or all of it?
Everything, I would say the, I would just like to see the three ties and then that number four, the one that got a four.
Okay.
Okay, so the three ties are Mr. Rodriguez, Mr. Kendall, Ms. Black Prothrow, and then the one, those are all tied at eight. And then after that, there is a person who received four points, Mr. Lydic.
Okay. Did that answer your question, Trustee Thigpen? Okay, so it looks like, clerk Meneteau, I see you're leaning in.
Well, I thought I'd start off the conversation. Thank you, Madam President.
Okay.
I think that between eight and 13 is a significant drop-off, and we could, if we can, have just three people in the running.
Okay, your recommendation is to do that, is to do that break there?
Pardon?
No, three, because there's
It looks like, in terms of clean breaks, if I might add, and then I see your hand, Trustee Church, we'll get to you. In terms of clean breaks, it looks like, it looks like there's a break between 13 and eight, and then there's a break between eight and four, like that. So then that's what, that's what you were referring to, Clerk Meneteau. Trustee Church? I'm sorry, I'm looking at you as if you can see me look at you, right? Trustee Church, yes, sir.
Thank you. I agree, I agree with Clerk Meneteau. The top three sound good to me, rather than make it complicated and debate the final, the three with the eight. I think if it's within our power, the top three are outstanding candidates, and I'm comfortable with that.
Okay, thank you, Trustee Church. Other comments? I was going to recommend the break after, after the three eights, because there are three of them there. But as a board, we get to decide whichever way we want to go. Both of them are places of clean break, so we can, we can go either way and still meet what our motion was, with the intent, certainly with the intent of our motion was originally. Yes, Dr. Nicolet?
I'm comfortable with your suggestion as well, the break after the eights, and so there would be six candidates. But I can live with three candidates as well. I just, those three eights, they just called to me to say, let's go for it and hear them again.
Well, they got quite a few votes, is why I kind of put that out there. The six of us, they probably got votes from, at least probably three trustees, three to four trustees, so I was looking from that standpoint. But again, this is, this is the work that we do to try to get to where we want to get, right? They're clean breaks either way, so we can go either way. Yes, Trustee Thigpen?
Yeah, I think, I think three sounds good, but I think, I'm kind of where Trustee Nicolet is. I'm kind of like, well, there's three eights right there. If we can pick one person or agree on one person out of those three to have four solid folks, I would like that.
Okay, that's an interesting, that's an interesting concept, okay? That would cause for, call for another process in this, another step in the process, which we can, which we could certainly do, best.
Would that have to be in writing, or can we just?
Yes, it would, I would think it should be, just for the, make sure for the record.
For the, yes.
And someone to have that. We could, I mean, we could, we could go, we could pick two or three out of that, actually, if we wanted to, based upon if we wanted to go four, not two or three, I'm sorry, we could go one or two, out of that, if we want to. But I'm still okay with six, with six people, so.
Yeah, I was thinking we could do vote three to one on these three options and come out with four candidates, hopefully, and three being the highest amount of votes, maybe, to whittle these three down to one person.
If you'd like to make that in the form of a motion? Oh, wait, 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 don't do it yet, we see Trustee Church, let's hear from him first. Go ahead, Trustee Church?
I think just keep it simple. I agree with the majority of the other comments. Let's just either do top three or the top six and move on.
Okay, thank you, Trustee Church. Where we, we can have a motion to do the top three and then vote it down, or we can do the motion to do, we have, we're considering three things. The three things we're considering is cut it out after three, or cut it off after six, or keep the three, and then of those final eight, do another vote, and we're going to land at some place which may be another clean break. That's, those are what we're considering, so. Dr. Nicolet, so you came up on, then we go to Trustee Thigpen?
I'm ready to make a motion. Would you like to speak first?
I'm ready to make a motion, too. You go ahead.
All right. Heads or tails?
You okay with her making that motion?
Let's play rock, paper, scissors.
Okay, stop. Are you okay, or you want your motion, you okay with her making the motion? You okay? Are Dr. Nicolet?
Ladies first.
Well, thank you. I move that we move six applicants forward. That would be John Galtney, Sean McCaffrey, Mr. Rodriguez, Mr. Kendall, Ms. Petro, and I can't read my writing.
Lorenzo?
Lorenzo, thank you. Candy Lorenzo.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor to move six forward to finalists, is there a second to the motion?
I'll second it.
There's a second from Trustee Church, any further discussion? Okay, seeing none? All those in favor of the motion, please? And by the way, there's six of us here, so we need four votes to pass the motion, okay? Because we still need to have a quorum, even though there aren't seven of us, quorum of the positions, okay? That's why we need you, so we can have seven, okay? All right, so we need four votes to pass a motion. So all those in favor of the motion to move these six names forward, as indicated, please, please indicate to it by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposition, oh, I'm sorry, Trustee Church, I got your ayes, you're thumbs up, thank you. Opposition?
Nay.
Okay, let's do a count, to make sure we're good, let's do a count.
Trustee Church?
Aye.
Trustee Minetto?
No.
President Taylor?
Aye.
Trustee Nicolette?
Aye.
Trustee Calvert?
Aye.
Trustee Thigpen? Motion passes four to two.
Motion passes four to two, so it looks like we have six names going forward, uh, six names going forward, yes, uh, trustee Thigpen?
Can I get clarity on the names? Because I, um, I had different names written in the order of the scoring, so I just wanna get clarification on those names of who's moving forward.
Okay, why don't we get those from JJ to make sure the, the motion is, make sure the motion, I know, sorry. Let's get the count from JJ to make sure the motion is accurately reflected.
The following six candidates would move forward for interviews per the motion. That is Mr. Gaultney, Mr. McCaffrey, Ms. Lorenzo, Mr. Rodriguez, Ms. Prothrow, and Mr. Kendall. So.
Okay, to answer that, any, any questions on that otherwise? Okay? Okay, all right, so that's what, so congratulations to, uh, Dr. Gaultney, Mr. McCaffrey, Ms. Lorenzo, Mr. Kendall, uh, Mr. Rodriguez, and, uh, Ms. Black Prothrow. Uh, you'll go forward as finalists, and what that means is on next Tuesday, nine AM, again, will be the, uh, interviews, okay? There will be, uh, you get some stuff in writing from JJ in between now and then, but as, as we mentioned before, the interviews will be, it's a public meeting, that will be in public, and there are some processes we'll go through, uh, in that. We will ask candidates, just so you know, and I want this to be on the record, we will, because it is a public meeting, um, we will ask candidates, uh, while, while other candidates, say there's six of you, they'll be drawn randomly, just as what the, using the very, very scientific pull-a-name-out-of-a-cup method that, uh, JJ established today, uh, that your names will be called randomly, you'll get questions from each of the board members, you will not know those questions in advance, and so as one person, as candidate A, is being interviewed, we will ask the other five, we'll have a, a room for you, um, so that you don't hear the other questions as they are being discussed and considered, and we will also ask you to, uh, turn over your, your devices to make sure that all that is done in private, so you don't have a well-meaning friend, "Hey, what about that question?" So we don't, we don't, we don't go, a well-meaning friend, we said, we wouldn't want that to be the case as well, um, either, and then, uh, we will have the, have the interview process, as you see in there, we'll ask the questions, and, uh, we will go from there. Again, we start at nine AM on next Tuesday. Again, you'll hear from JJ, and you can certainly email if you have questions. Okay, that's it for that. Next item on the agenda is public comment. Do we have any general public comment, JJ?
Do.
Yes, go, go right ahead.
The board received an email from Mary Ortiz, John Appolito.
Oh, yeah, of course, we had general public comment. Thank you for dividing it up, Mr. Appolito, I appreciate it.
That's what I'm here for, Angie, to make you happy. My name is John Appolito. This is approximately where I was cut off. These education vendors know infinitely more about our children than Facebook, Google, and other social media vendors will ever learn about us adults. Students share schoolwork, personal information, including their ideas, attitudes, and beliefs, with numerous education vendors, 'cause you guys force them to use them. All this data and information goes into a black hole. Almost everything these kids share with these education vendors will never be seen by parents. In addition, many of these vendors create student profiles on the kids. No one really knows how all the data and these profiles created secretly on students will, will, may affect their future. Benchmark, that's the vendor the district wants to use for the critical race theory social justice curriculum. The district told us, quote, "Benchmark collects when students start and stop a lesson, timing of a student's responses, and which lessons the student chose," end quote. In Benchmark's privacy policy, they tell us they will share our children's data with others. They don't say who. Here's the kinda thing Protect Nevada has children has been talking about for years: Parents. If Benchmark, or someone Benchmark shares your child's data with, labels your child as a racist prior to fifth grade, you will never know. Nor will parents know if, when, and how that label may affect the future of their children. Two thousand seventeen, ZDNet called the Edmodo data breach one of the three biggest data breaches of the year. We begged this board to tell parents, you all refused. Two thousand eighteen, Edmodo was sold to the Chinese for the student data and stu- student profiles Edmodo had amassed on our children. Again, we begged this board to tell parents, you, you refused. Finally, a year later, Washoe County School District took Edmodo off the approved vendors' list. Also in two thousand nineteen, MyNews4 ran this story titled, quote, "Reno Mom Says App Used in School Contributed to Her Son's Suicide," end quote. It took a year for the district to get this app out of our schools. And don't forget about the psychological assessment that, that the district gave to over a thousand children without their parents' consent. This vendor still has the data, most parents don't even know the assessment was given. You can find over thirteen hundred of us on our private Facebook page, Protect Nevada Children. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Appolito.
You're welcome.
Janet Butcher?
You say Butcher? Welcome, Ms. Butcher.
Good morning. I hope you, everyone had a safe and happy Independence Day. Um, I'm hoping that you give an equitable replacement to the position, to someone who aligns with the person that was elected in the first place. I'd like to give you some examples of real oppression. Attempted silencing of parents and others in the community. Locking the community out of meetings under the guise of safety. Not following Governor Sicilac's fifty percent capacity edict once it was noticed at the DeMonte Ranch that the community was showing up in force. And the misinforming of the community via the local propaganda media. Another example of oppression is ignoring the overwhelming response of eighty-five percent of the parents against teaching a theory or social justice. Changing the venue to mitigate the crowd, making concerned citizens sit outside in Placing "get off my lawn" signs to mitigate the number of concerned citizens that sought shade while waiting in the heat to let their voices be heard. I sat next to a window, and I know that the, um, what was said about to mitigate the noise, uh, there was no noise. Using the board's definition, I observed an inequitable interruption of candidates to ask questions. Found that interesting. One last comment, since it is summer vacation, and it is the week after Independence Day holiday, um, I'm hoping that all the candidates were equally, um, given the opportunity to, to know that, that they were to be here today. Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
Welcome back, Mr. Parks. Thank you. This has been an interesting morning, to say the least. Yeah, I was under no delusions that I would even be considered, but I appreciate the opportunity to be here and speak. I was hoping for an opportunity for a dialogue, didn't happen. I would encourage you to please conduct some town halls, so we can have a dialogue, so we can talk about things. Don't just sit here and make decisions without getting the input from the public that you serve. I wanna introduce you to a couple of terms, as it pertains to politicians. Jellyfish. Jellyfish have been around for millions of years, no brains, no backbones, but here they are. And we see them all throughout the political structure of this country, this state, this city, and of course, Washoe County. Another term I'd like to introduce you to is post turtle. What's a post turtle, you might ask? Well, a post turtle is when you're driving along in the country, and you see a fence post that has a turtle on top of it. You automatically know that he has been elevated above his ability to function. You don't have any id, he doesn't have any idea how he got up there. You gotta wonder about who would put that up there in the first place, and you also know that they're not gonna get down without help. A post turtle. So I ask you, are you a post turtle? Are you jellyfish? Or are you an actual representative of the people that elected you? Now, we're talking about an appointment here. That's what we've been here all morning about. It's not an elected position. How many unelected bureaucrats do we have running every aspect of our daily lives? Are you aware that there are forty thousand regulations attached to the hamburger that you got from McDonald's yesterday? Forty thousand? It's in the National Registry. Majority of those, rules, regulations, laws, were all instituted by unelected bureaucrats, not by elected representatives. I would love to have a dialogue with you. Please, let's do a town hall. You know, I heard you speak, Ms. Taylor, about being, you know, respectful and, and constructive, and, yes, I would love to be able to do that, but since this format does not allow that to happen, we'll have to see. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Parks.
Victoria Meyer?
Is it Meyer?
Meyer.
Meyer. Meyer, thank you for being here, ma'am.
Thank you for the opportunity. Uh, I like that idea of a town hall. I think you all should take that into consideration. That would be a great opportunity for parents and grandparents like myself to, uh, have actual dialogue with you folks on some of the, some of the, uh, upcoming and serious issues we have going on. So, uh, you have an important decision before you, with, to fill the, this seat. Who will you support? Washoe County's graduation rate, level of competency of its students upon graduation, and the Washoe County students' preparedness for their future looks pretty dismal, folks. According to your own website, statistics from your own website, Washoe County School District, Nevada is forty-seventh at best in the nation in graduation rates and test scores. Why is that? What is going on with the goals and direction of this school district? Could it be that you have lost the correct focus? Our students should be the focus. The focus should be to teach our children the tools for success, such as reading, reading comprehension, writing, math, science, not emotional social learning or social justice or whatever name you choose to call it today. The proposed supplemental curriculum, I've reviewed it, has been reviewed by many, it's completely inappropriate for our students. They need basic skills so they can become successful participants in a, in a nation, an economic system that has created the highest standard of the living for the greatest number of people ever in human history. We're not a perfect nation, but our mechanisms to promote equality are unsurpassed in history. It is here, in our schools, where the, where the knowledge must be taught in order to live as a free and prosperous people. What is being taught instead is political, immoral, and downright diabolical. Let me ask you a few questions. What is moral in teaching children to hate and be afraid and ashamed? Do you support separating our children by race? Do you support separating third graders into oppressor and oppressed? Do you support teaching our children to feel guilt and shame for being born a certain color? Do you support a curriculum that teaches that all white people promote perpetual systemic That's a social justice curriculum. What do these teachings have to do with the success of our children? Choose a person who may not share your agenda. If you truly value diversity of thought, choose a person that will add dialogue.
Thank you, Ms. Meyer.
And an opposing view.
Ms. Meyer, outside your time is up, ma'am.
If you have the courage.
Thank you very much for being here.
Thank you.
Welcome, Ms. Coley.
Hi. Um, I was just curious if, uh, Superintendent McNeil, that you ever received, um, my highlighted interview that you did with KUNR, and all of the lessons that completely refute what you said I gave them? You said there was no oppression or oppressed culture in, in your interview. That's not what you're doing, that's not what these lessons are about, and it does not say anything about white male privilege. You said that in an interview, and I highlighted all of the lessons that said those. So is that misinformation? Is it lies? Is it a mistake? I called KUNR to ask if you had called them. They said no. So I, I, that's, that's misinformation that you keep saying that we're doing. So, I, I'm, I'm just trying to get this straight. And the social justice curriculum, um, really is based on the opinion that we live in a racist society. I don't believe we do. And you know who else said they don't believe that we live in a racist society? President Joe Biden and Kamala Harris said that. So these lessons are based on the opinion that we live in a racist society. So these lessons are opinions. We don't believe in that opinion. These parents, all these parents don't believe that, but these lessons push that, yes, yes we are. Joe Biden says we aren't. Kamala Harris says we aren't. Are we gonna push the opinion, yes, yes we are? Is that, is that where we're going? 'Cause that's what these lessons are doing. It's, it's opinion, these are opinions, and we have a different opinion. And your opinion is so divisive and scary. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Coley. That's all I have. Okay, thank you, JJ. Okay, now we're into agenda item four, which is adjournment, so thank you very much, again, for all of you who came out to be a part of the process, to share your public comment, and again, for those who, uh, gonna move on as finalists, uh, congratulations. Uh, for those that are not, then, um, we will certainly reach out to you, because we certainly want this to be the beginning of your engagement, not the end. So thank you so much, everybody, we are adjourned.